Five PM. The report out, we already opened the meeting at 5:30 pursuant to the noticed agenda and the report out from closed session is that no actions were taken. Now is the time for public comment on any items not on the agenda and within our jurisdiction. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tracy Lewis. I teach at NE8's Elementary School. I just have a couple of questions for the board, given our, the events that happened at NE8's earlier today, where there's active construction and things going on with the plumbing while students are present. So today, I'm sure you all are all aware that a glass, that there was some type of gas leak or a gas line was broken. My questions are in regards to the safety of students and staff, where potential like that, something like that could happen, and why that construction is going on while students are present, and why staff is present. I mean, it's after hours now, there's no reason why they couldn't have to do all that work while students are not present. My other concern is the need for our site to have some information around our calendar, our staff, what our placements are, where that information is, so that we can begin to properly plan for next year. There are a lot of committees that are constructing ideas, but we need some solid information. Like, who are, who are, how are we gonna do prep? Well, we don't know if we're gonna have a PE teacher, a music teacher, all of those other things that were previously discussed and approved for. We have Ms. McDonald, that's awesome, but do we actually have these people so that we can begin to plan and set our schedules? We really would like to be setting up for success and not setting up to have a struggling beginning of the year like we had this year. It is so very, very, very difficult. The beginning of the year already presents problems when we have our clients, which are our parents, who are ready to get the year started, and we need to have schedules and things in place for them, and teachers also need to prepare. And a lot of times, we're doing that work now, looking forward, and sometimes even over the summer, but we do like to have a summer break as well. So, those are my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And Superintendent, I trust you can address those two matters with staff at a later date. Terrific, thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Seeing none. We're on to reports. Do we have a report from CSEA this evening? ETA? Our student representative isn't here. The superintendent, do we have a board report?
Good evening, everybody. Just a quick note that the construction meetings have really picked up lately. We have, we have made some alterations and changes as the plans had been, had been a few years old, and we are continuing to work closely with the construction company on determining the most efficient improvements that we can make on the plans. And there's a lot of work going on around the city aspects of the programming as well, and we're now looking at the pool and that renovation as well. So that's it for my report.
Okay, thank you. In the interest of moving us along, we have a full agenda. I'm gonna skip the board president's report for tonight, and we'll go right into the consent calendar. Are there any items board members would like to pull? I had a question on the academic calendar, so I'm gonna pull number five for my question.
I had a question on the warrants, so please pull.
All right, so item one. Member Dice? Okay. All right, do we have a motion on items two, three, and four?
So moved.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
President Athol?
Yes.
Vice President Dice?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
So the items two, three, and four, the consents calendar are adopted by a vote of three to zero. Warrants, member Miriam?
Yes. Just two questions on that. First things, first has to do with... Yes, item, do we have the items on numbers? Two things, one was the... The IOR inspection for the extended demolition portion of the ECCL, or the existing high school. And that is, forgive me.
Additional IOR services?
Yeah.
Page two? For fourteen thousand dollars, six hundred dollars?
Yeah, Jason Zalinski, for fourteen thousand, six hundred. And then the other was Plan Grid, which is the fifth from the bottom on the same sheet. And the amount of twenty-four hundred.
Mr. Baker, can you give us a hand with these two questions? Thanks.
John, do you want the warrants to see?
Yeah, good evening. The, the two items that are being discussed are, first, the inspector of record, Jason Zalinski. Jason Zalinski had been retained by the district prior to our, prior to the least least backed contract to be the inspector of record for the demolition project. We then went through a public process of procuring inspectors of record for the main project, with the intent of having those inspectors start immediately on the project. The Division of the State Architect required that Mr. Zalinski maintain, maintain his role as inspector of record on the demolition project until that project was completed. It was the first of the six packages that went to DSA. We'd already closed out his services, but had to bring him back to kind of close out that project. It'll result in less costs needed from our IOR firm TYR, but we weren't able to bring them on right away because DSA required that Mr. Zalinski close out that first package.
All right, that's what I was thinking.
Okay. The second item, Plan Grid. Turner Construction uses a cloud-based software system called Plan Grid for their ASBulldocuments and updating all their documents in kind of a real-time fashion. The, there's no contract requirement for them to provide that to ourselves, however, both our team in the field and the IORs benefit greatly from the access to that, to that system so they can see the ASBulldocuments as they're posted online. And so Turner made that available, available to us at the purchase of some licenses. So we bought four licenses, I believe, for six hundred dollars each for the duration of the project. It'll make our team more efficient in the field, make the inspectors more efficient, and so it was a wise investment, I believe.
All right, all right, thank you. Member Dice, did you have a warrant question?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Member Miriam, all right, do we have a motion to adopt the warrants?
Move approval.
Member Miriam?
Second, and yes.
Roll call, please.
President Athol?
Yes.
Vice President Dice?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
All right, the motion to adopt the warrants is approved, three to zero. Item five is the academic calendar, and my question on that is that calendars and dates and months and, you know, Mondays start differently every year, but it, it seems that we're sort of starting a week later and going three weeks into June, ending a week later, which is, we are ending three weeks in June this year, but we, we added a week for the professional development in the middle, so I guess, is this a decision to kind of move, shift our whole academic calendar down one week later and kind of keep it there, or is there any particular thinking behind?
Yeah, there was, there was some teacher input last summer around the idea of starting later and maybe trying to take advantage of the Labor Day holiday, that we tried, there was some intent this year and three options that teachers voted on to possibly do that again, but Labor Day landed on a week out, a later week this year. So it was based primarily on that conversation with the potential idea of doing maybe some more professional development days in the beginning of the year, but with the budget situation and the teachers not as interested in that calendar, that's not what we ended up with. So, that was, that was what moved us in that direction.
Okay. All right. That was my only question. Any, any other questions on the calendar?
Just curious if it lines up with kind of the, you know, the Oakland and the other districts in terms of pre and post, I guess, like, not summer, but does it just line up in terms of most of the, remind, what do they call, surrounding districts?
No, in fact, we believe all the surround, the very closest districts to us all have different calendars this year. So, no. We do, we do glance at them, but no.
So the, yeah, in particular, the February week off and then the Easter, spring week off, those are different from Oakland and Berkeley? Because that's, that's where parents are looking for camps, and there are more camps available when those larger districts are off.
I'm, I'm gonna guess that they're different than the other districts right now, so if you...
Do you have a different information, Ms. Tamari?
Do you have other information on that?
What I've heard from Oakland is every other year, they switch it every other year. So one year it's the week before Easter, the next year it's the week after. I don't know why, but that's what they do.
Yeah, so do you know what that would mean for next year?
I don't.
Okay. So they're a moving target. Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to adopt the academic calendar?
So moved.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
President Athol?
Yes.
Member Dice?
Present, um, mm-mm, yes, sorry.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Okay. We're now on to our action items. First item is resolution regarding classified reduction or discontinuance of services for fifteen, sixteen. Superintendent, do you want to introduce the item?
Yes, I do, thank you. The purpose of this is to provide notice to classified staff of layoffs, not later than sixty days prior to the date of the effective layoff. As you may know, and those of you in the crowd may know, the governor has published a May revise to his budget. That revise is going to result in additional funding for schools. However, and that's gonna, that does help us in some ways, but we still have to really proceed with caution. It is really imperative, I think, for us as a community to work together to increase enrollment, because our, one of our main financial challenges right now is the school district, is enrollment. We need to really attract and bring in more students to our school district. However, the May revise does give us a little bit of flexibility right now, so I am changing this resolution, and I have put, Ms. Tamari's put in front of you, my altered recommendation on the classified layoffs, and that is a change of five FTE instead of seven.
And, and the difference in the two instead of seven is?
The two instructional aid positions.
Would be maintained?
Would be maintained, that's correct. And, and I guess I should add that that's based on the current situation. When I say we need to proceed with caution, I, I really mean it. I, I think right now, it's possible that I could bring this to you and, and say that, you know, we can proceed with a change of five layoffs instead of seven, but even keeping the two may not be a long-term situation.
Well, I, I don't wanna have a discussion now, other than point to the, the next item, which is the third interim. And I appreciate that you put forth two options for the board and the public to consider, one option being seven, a reduction in all seven, and then the other option being reduction in just five of the seven. So either, as we'll discuss, both, both options indicate still quite large ongoing deficits in the future, either way, but your recommendation is to stomach some of the deficit for a little while longer, at least with respect to, by maintaining two, two of the instructional aids.
That's correct.
Okay. Why don't, why don't we go to public comment, unless there are any sort of pressing questions or issues from the board first? Okay, do we have a public comment on this item?
Good evening, I'm Kathy Rollins, and I am the CSEA staff person, who, as I said last time, has the honor to work with this district and this chapter. And I have to say that we're somewhat in the same place that we were at the last meeting, in that we don't have additional information from the district. We're hoping, or we were hoping that you all would have made sure that that information is out. So if I could remind you on the issues that we had, we wanted to understand how it is a district will function with only one manager and no one else to do fiscal services in this district. We wanted to know how eight hours of work for an office manager is going to be absorbed by people remaining. We wanted to understand with other people absorbing other work, how the data coordinator things would get done, and also all of the services that the after-school program person is currently doing, who's going to do that. Last meeting, there had been an indication that there was going to be a meeting with CSEA that Friday, and it was canceled, and we have not received any information. We don't understand how the board can go forward with cuts without there being discussion about who will do the work, how will it get done. Honestly, at the last meeting, the gentleman who just came in made a comment that he thought with the building of a new facility, that that was going to enable the district to cut positions. And while that might be something down the road, currently, when we've asked about the impact of things like that, we're told we don't know. There's been no discussion. So tell us how you can, and the superintendent can continue to manage within the so-called guidelines that you have listed here in terms of the professional expectations, a sense of family and all of that, and there's still no information about how this work is going to get done. And yes, we're very concerned about the work that our members are currently doing, but we're also very concerned about the welfare of the district and the student, because part of our commitment is to see that the community and students thrive as well as our people be employed. So we would hope that you would have more information provided before you asked for a vote. Additionally, last time, we had mentioned that it was difficult for a layperson to look at the proposed budget and understand what really was being changed there, and again, there aren't specific things that make it clear. So in part of having this discussion, we hope that, that you'll provide information that will, one, make us feel like it makes a difference to you all, that you know that there's a pan, a plan in place, that there isn't simply discussion going on behind the scenes, and that our people are really being fairly looked at for the contributions they're making. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other public comment?
Good evening. Hello? Good evening, board. My name is Jac, a little taller. My name is Jacqueline Adams, and I am the Emory Secondary School Office Manager, but unfortunately today, I am one of, now it seems like, five classified employees whose position is being eliminated due to what I am thinking, potential fiscal insolvency. I did not attend the last board meeting on May fifteenth, but I did watch it on YouTube the day after. I wanted to first say thank you, board, for not just making a decision quickly, but requesting more information about these recommendations, because when it comes down to eliminating these positions, all at one time and in haste, it seems like, it does lead to who is going to do the work? Who is going to provide the services to the students like classified staff provide? I, as a classified staff, regularly go out of my way to ensure that the students can focus on their studies versus having to worry about bullying or fighting with another group of students. I daily mentor students on how to be an upstanding adult in training. Every day, I am a mother, a father, a sister, a brother to these students, trying to create a sense of family for these students. What about the students? What is going to happen when seven of us are gone and the classified staff whom remain are so overworked and spread like butter over too many loaves of bread? What is going to happen when not only the clerical work that is consistent, but the support and attention we give these two students daily, most of whom have no one else to talk to? Parents bring their students to Emory every day under the impression that is what we are creating, that sense of family, but the sense of family has been deteriorating for years. I started as a food service sub, worked at the Emeryville Child Development Center, worked in the wellness department, and with Emory Ed Fund before landing in the office manager position three years ago, but I was in the district far more. What intrigued me to move around and explore the inner workings of the district was because, and like our Emory parents, was intrigued by the sense of family that we had. With declining enrollment being said as the rationale behind these current classified cuts, I can almost guarantee it is not the stellar programs and/or the promise of a new site facility that make these students want to stay here, but they stay for the staff, which include the classified, and the sense of family that is unique to Emory. Classified staff are multifunction by definition, especially when the district is small. We all wear many hats consistently and on a daily basis. We have lost many key employees and were never replaced, and no conversations had about whom is going to do their work, and in the natural order of things in this district, it falls on the classified's laps. So I have said all of this to say this. To have this proposal on the docket without any conversation or any intervention about what we really do and not have a plan on the outcome is not the best practice. Outside of the four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars you're saving from us being eliminated, what is your desired outcome you are hoping to attain next? May God bless and keep us all, keep us all.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Additional public comment?
Good evening, Emory Unified School District family, friends, and school board members. My name is Brenda Collins. I was not able to attend the last school board meeting. I was in Monterey helping my daughter, Brittany, sitting right here, prepare to get her degree, which happened last week, so I'm very proud of her. So, and Brittany is an Emory alumni, high school president, and she is here tonight to help me with a couple of things. But before I left for this amazing milestone in our life, I was verbally notified the Friday before Mother's Day that my position with the Emory Unified School District would be one of the positions considered for termination. Before making any decisions based on what I think the district is having you believe is my job description, I would like for you to see for yourself, at your convenience, to please take a moment to review what is actually my job functions in this district. However, I am only hearing conversations about my position as after-school coordinator, which is thirty percent of my weekly duties, which is also an ongoing grant-funded position. However, my main concern is the job description that has been placed before the school board in writing, which is only the after-school coordinating. In all due respect, it is a misrepresentation of my job duties and functions in this district. I am not sure why the district is not reflecting the seventy percent of my job function, which is student activities coordinator slash ASB advisor, in any conversations. It appears to me that they are making it look as if it is nonexisting, and wow, this is quite mind-blowing for me. Why? Because I have been serving in this position for quite a few years now. I have a question to myself. Is it a belief on the school board's behalf that they will only be terminating the after-school coordinator position, or will they, or are you also aware that you will be eliminating the student activities coordinator as well as the ASB advisor, which are under the ED Code? The answer is a mystery to me, and I don't want the truth to go unspoken or to be misrepresented by what you might think is in writing. We are the soldiers, and my question to Emory Unified School District is, all of us make your army, and how can you fight a war without your army complete?
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Yes, additional comment, please.
Good, good evening. Unlike my colleagues, I didn't come here, and if I get a little emotional, my story will tell why, I didn't come here with a prepared statement, because what I speak of is the passion that I have carried for this district for twelve years. April twenty-third made it twelve years. I have survived seven superintendents, two state administrators, several board meetings, five principals, yet I'm still here. I'm, I'm here because of the passion and the dedication that I have given to this district. And it's not to exclude what my colleagues have done, but just to give you an idea, on day one, I was told, we're a small district, and you're gonna do more than be just an attendance clerk. You're gonna do more than be just an instructional assistant. You're gonna do more than be a registrar, a data coordinator. Those are titles I've held in the twelve years, on top of cheer coach, softball coach. To give you an idea of my passion, I've been a softball coach for this district for years. This year, I did it unpaid, because that was my passion. It wasn't to get paid, it was to be here for our children. Those are my babies. I've graduated, this year will be my thirteenth class that I'm walking out of here. My daughter is a part of that class. My son was a part of last year. I have a tenth grader that I pulled out of a pristine charter school to be a part of this Emory family. I've got Emory babies in the audience, class of oh eight. I know, I know my classes, I know my kids. We boast, on the average, because I'm the registrar and data coordinator, I know how many children we get in here. I know how many children I personally recruited, which is what we need to focus on. In the three years, the past three years, the only people who have went out there and stomped pavement so that we wouldn't... stomped pavement so that we wouldn't be at this juncture right now has been your classified staff at the high school. Brenda Collins, Jackie Adams, the ISO quadir, Valerie Walker, we stomped the pavement from Richmond to Fremont. To get our, get our numbers at, uh, when we moved to the 54th Street, we were at 242. In my 12 years I've been here, we have never bounced below 200. We boast 180 kids. Fifty of them are walking across the sta- stage in two weeks. What are you going to do? What are you going to do? You're going to cut more people? You're going to sacrifice lives? You're going to sacrifice jobs? I have to tell you a heartbreaking story because, like I said, it's my passion for this district. I boast to my children, nothing less than a C. Keep that GPA above 3.0 and you can go anywhere in life, anywhere. My daughter, who was crossing the stage in three, two weeks, she did that until the Friday before my Mother's Day. And I'm the mother of 180 students, not three. And if you want me to count the 12 years, I'm the mother of all of those classes because every one of them, when they see me on the street, they say, hey, Mom, how you doing? She got accepted to Portland State. But on, on the Friday before my Mother's Day, I had to tell her she couldn't go. Because the people that I gave 12 years of my life to, 12 years of her life to, took my job away, took my passion away, took their passion away. And you know what she said? Mama, that's their loss because you gave all you could. I gave blood, I gave sweat, I gave tears. And I still give. There isn't a kid in this audience that doesn't have my personal cellphone number that can call me any time of day. I'm Facebook friends with 1,100 students. My name is in Oakland Unified, Berkeley Unified, and they're all kids. Because at the end of the day, your budget, the deficit, no books, no supplies, that's not what counts. These babies are the ones that are going to take care of you when it's time to retire. I love you, Brenda. At the end of the day, it's about these babies. I walked around for eight years without a raise, still paying the same mortgage because it wasn't about the money. Wasn't about the money, it wasn't about the benefits, it was about these babies. And it's still about these babies. And when I walk out that door on June 23rd, guess what? I'm a Spartan till I die. I rock blue and gold on a regular. I am a lady Spartan till I die, and I'll be back.
Thank you, thank you. Other public comment, please? Seeing none.
How's everybody doing tonight? Again, my name is Harjit Singh. I talked to the board last, what, maybe two weeks ago? So I don't want to reiterate, rephrase everything, say it again. I guess it's the same story being told by everybody. But we would actually like you some closure. There's a lot of stress being held in everybody's mind, a lot of tension, causing a lot of tension to families as well. Today, the privilege, there's other students that are here that have been taught by all of these classified staff. Mrs. Walker, Ms. Plaha, Brenda, Mrs. Collins, some, Ms. Adams, there you go, okay. Ms. Dunn, too, she's here. I can name a lot of people. That gentleman right there, he also graduated. Now he's a success, successful businessman right there, owns his own mechanic business. All I want to say is, um, we'd actually just like a final decision today. I mean, whatever you guys find is good, so I can go home and be less tense, stress-free, because this is causing me a lot of stress. And I don't stress normally. I got a gray hair last week. Sorry about that. Everybody have a good night.
All right, thank you.
My name is Misha, and I'm here to talk to everyone again about the classified staff. But more importantly, I want to talk about the budget that was presented at the end of the last board meeting. One of the things that I don't understand is that there's been an increase in, um, benefits, but that was never really, um, gone into detail. I see in the last years compared to what's proposed for next year, there's about an increase of $457,000. And I just want to know what that increase is going towards because that hasn't been disclosed. But I do know that the cuts that were proposed at the last, at the end of the last meeting was around $400,000. So, um, I, I would like some clarity about that. And, um, another thing that was talked about at the last meeting, if you remember, was the signing bonuses that the district gives out to encourage other teachers to come to the district. But I feel like that's hard to do because the kind of employee morale that's in, in the district now, it, it's really hard to have an effective, productive staff if you don't feel like you're part of a family and you're not secure about your job because you may be let go at any point in time. So, you know, I understand the funding comes from a certain place, as we were told last time, but regardless of whether there's funding, I, I know there's plenty of staff here that is here now because they have a job, but because of the low morale that's here, they may, may not want to stay. So, and, and based on the comments that we've heard, I feel like a lot of the sense of community is breaking at this point. And, um, I just feel like there's been, there has to be strategic cuts that need to be made, but at the same time, it feels like based on the positions that were proposed to be cut or that are going to be cut, the district is still proposing hiring new staff next year, but it doesn't feel like it's a cut of positions, it's a cut of people. So, we're rearranging people and getting people that we want or that we don't need. So I just encourage that for the community, for the students here, for everybody's morale to be high that there's transparency in the budget, in the operations, in the hiring and firing practices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board and other members. Um, I just wanted to come before you all this evening in regards to the, um, job description as well as the item on the docket. Um, in regards to that, I have been in the school district as a student, as a present alumni now, um, since 2005, so for the past decade. And I have seen the frivolous work that these individuals have displayed and illustrated upon us as students, as well as throughout this community as a whole. And as our guiding principle is creating a sense of family, I have endured that nature of a family, not only from having my own mother in regards to this position as a classified employee, but also my extended family as of Ms. Walker, Ms. Adams, uh, Ms. Plaha, and other recipients on the docket as well. So I just wanted to let you all know, to take in regards to the simple fact, um, as a family, you, you don't let each other down, you always have each other's backs. And there's always been a guiding principle as a school president, um, of the class of 2010. I definitely understood that value and seeing everyone in their sentiment values as well tonight, I definitely would like to put so upon you the idea that you just have to take in consideration not only the money, but you have to take consideration of people's feelings, the feelings of the students, the feelings of the classroom. Um, I'm not sure if any of you have ever sat into any of the classrooms, but today I did. I sat in on two classes. I was not satisfied at all, um, just in terms of the effort that the participants or this classmates had because of the lack of love that they felt in that classroom, because there is a lack of love and emotion due to the simple fact of the docket item that you all have been discussing. So I just wanted to let you know that it is a reciprocal effect. It does not only go upon just financial issues, but it also goes upon emotions and that sense of family as our guiding principle and as our guiding leaders of a board of directors. I definitely want you to understand that this will have a ripple effect and that this can definitely be resolved in a matter of allowing our family to become whole and to keep everyone as one. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment on this item?
Good evening, board. I was not prepared to come to this meeting at all. I was, I was told to come here, I was asked to come here by Ms. Brenda, Ms. Collins. And it's really, really, really crazy how the classified staff is about to be terminated or could be terminated from their positions because of a, a cutback. We have a whole new building being built right now, and we have seven or five people being cut. I don't, I just don't think it's fair. Ms. Walker, if any one of my friends, myself included, if we were, let's say, cutting class or weren't where we're supposed to be, Ms. Walker's right there and she's going to really get us back to class, words and all. Ms. Plaha, I've known Ms. Plaha since elementary school. There's really absolutely no reason for her to be in this position at all, at all. Ms., Ms. Collins, the funniest, brightest, always smiling person in the world. This, this is really, really not, this is really unacceptable. I can't believe we're, we're sitting right here. I, I was told we're going to a meeting about, you know, about the, the school district, but really it's about the most outstanding staff that you have. This is really not a good idea to at least attempt to, you know, terminate these classified, as you say, staff. The cla- the classification is way above par, past par. And it's just crazy how I don't see not one pin being lifted, except for one, and that's on this little tablet, but you guys aren't taking any notes. These, these classified staff are the best staff that you're going to, that you're ever going to have. They have a different type of respect from the kids, a whole different type of respect. I wouldn't dare speak back to any of the classified staff that you have. My mom wasn't at school every day, but Ms., Ms. Collins was at school, Ms. Walker was at school, Ms. Hessel. If I stepped foot on that concrete without Ms. Hessel being right there, it's, it's going to be a big problem. Ms. Hessel, that's, that's all I have to say. I just can't believe that we're right here right now.
Any further public comment on this item?
Audrey Miles, kindergarten teacher, Anna Yates. Board, when we talk about the fact that we're getting additional $3,000 this year, I see this more of being a, not so much as a budget issue, but as an enrollment issue. What I've seen for the last two years is a constant decline in our high school enrollment. It's almost feels like we've stopped worrying about what's present and worrying about what new ECL will look like. That's what it feels like to all of us. I remember sitting in a staff meeting and feeling like those of us that have been in the trenches, those of us who walk the pavement, spoke to people in the community to get the bond measure passed, to get that ECL built. I sat, I was one of the people you often asked to speak at the city schools meeting. I went out to some, uh, many of the community meetings to speak to encourage the bond measure. We are the people that were in the trenches that helped to make sure that the new school is built. And yet many of us feel like we're being pushed out. We feel like we're not what you, many of us feel that when it comes time for ECL to be there, many of us won't be there. You know? And so if that's the case, why are we not looking at what enrollment is now? Why are we not out recruiting students? You're saying you recruit, I saw something in the city council bulletin where we're out recruiting for ECL. Why are we not out recruiting for the current school that we have now? We let our enrollment get down under 189? I see that as a problem. It's like we decided, well, we're not going to do anything until, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but when you look at what's happening in the community, people are looking at that. Why am I going to send my child to a school where there's only 189 students, there are no programs, they have nothing to offer the students at the Emory Secondary School? If we're truly saying that we are a sense of family and that we're building our enrollment, we should be building our enrollment now with, with programs and encouraging them by saying, these are the things that we are going to continue to focus in on as we move into the ECL. When we started off the year this year, we started off with no principal, and it went downhill from there. Okay? It, it just felt like all of a sudden, we, everything that was good about Anna Yates, they just took it and threw it away. It's like it wasn't good. We didn't get to be an 815 school by not doing what was right. We, we, we were up and our scores were moving, and yet everything that was established procedure and program at Anna Yates got thrown in the water. What was wrong with it? Nothing. You got good teachers, you got good staff. All of that helped to build who we were as a school, who we are as a school. We weren't, we're not dead, we're still here. But some days it feels like that because it doesn't seem like our voice is heard. And so what we're asking is looking at not staff, but looking at programs, looking at what we can do to build, so that when we're ready, and we've had several meetings, several, several meetings, where we sat and talked about what ECL will look like, what the vision of ECL will look like, you know? So we should be taking those visions right now and applying them and working with the staff that we have to develop the program so that when we move in, we can hit the ground running. That's what I see. That's what we said when we sat in all those hours and hours and hours of meeting, to develop what the programs will look like. So I think taking a second look at this year and working for it, and I understand this might be short-term, but I think the goal should be to work on enrollment and work on program so that we can entice good students to come to Emory Secondary and keep the students that we're having at Emory at Anna Yates Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. Other public comment? Okay, I'm closing. Public comment on this item? Board member comments and thoughts? Member Pats, before you walked in.
I get to pass something revised.
Superintendent, yeah, revised, uh, the resolution to, um, propose a cut of five, not seven, eliminating the cut of the two instructional leads.
So I want to apologize for being late this evening, and, uh, I was not able to make it to the special meeting last night because of work obligations, nor to the, uh, finance committee. So if I'm a little behind on some of these things, I apologize. But I do want to talk about what you guys had to say because I thought it was very powerful, and I did take notes. And, uh, I'll start with you since you called me out, and I will, uh, you know, I hope you and Mr. Singh, and you didn't give your name, so I don't know it, um, but I hope you and Mr. Singh are still in Emeryville and, and start participating more in the, uh, I'd like to see you on this side of the dais. I think we need, um, more young people involved, and I'd love to see that. So I'm going to throw that out there. I know that's not related to the topic, and I apologize for wandering. Um, you know, and I, a- as you spoke, I, I, particularly the last speaker, I, I, Langston Hughes came to mind, and, uh, you know, I agree with you, it's a, anytime we defer something, it's a denial, and I always worry about that. And so that just rattled in my head. Um, and then I want to correct the first speaker who was here, and I'm going to phrase, I want to correct myself. If I said that, what I meant to say or what I intended to be heard was that part of the plan that I'm concerned with has always been this idea that by moving to a single site, we take away some key members of our community. And I, I worry about that, and I don't know that- And I, I worry about that, and I don't know that this is the end, because we talk about savings as we move into a single site. So that's, that's what I meant last week, and I apologize for not articulating that well. But I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. I've been speaking at the last two board meetings about spending $60,000 a year on Townsend, and I just want to know, is that still in the budget, or have we finally gotten rid of that? It's in the budget. Removal is, so we are dropping that contract.
Do you want me to respond to that? It's, I don't know if this is directly related, I assume it is, but the answer is yes. We are cutting that contract.
Okay.
We're, we're continuing to look, you know, I feel, I don't feel good about these cuts because they involve people and people who have given many years, so I don't want you to think that I, I have some enjoyment at all at any level for this. And we continue to look at our budget. We're continuing to look at staffing and certificated, we're continuing to look at everything we can.
Because that, that was an important thing for me, and I just, looking at the budgets, because we're doing this and that, I, I just want to throw a number out there. Per ADA, which is 93% of our students, we have more students than show up every day, we spend $1,400 on administrative salaries. And so I just want to throw that out there between classified and certificated based on the, the budget that's out there now. I think part of that's because we're a small district, but I also wonder if that's not where we want to look to make cuts. The contracts, we are getting better on, I'll end on a positive note. That was one of the few, first things I looked at is the contracting. In the 1314 year, we spent over a million dollars. We're on pace this year to only spend a quarter of a million, which is a significant decrease, and I'd like to see it gone down by even more. And so I think that's at least a positive. So those are some of my thoughts on this.
Other thoughts from the side of the dais?
I guess my, none of these are easy, simple decisions, and as was presented in the first May 15 meeting, or whatever, two weeks ago from today, these are decisions that have to be made, unfortunately. I think they're, I don't know how clear it's been, but there's been a number of funding streams that have no long, that dried up, or grants that were providing support for a number of positions that no longer exist, that we basically, if I'm getting this right, the general fund was taking the burden of keeping that whole. So enrollment is absolutely the challenge of this district, and it's not a new thing, but it's definitely at an all-time problem, I'll say. So having a plan and knowing what exactly we will do is, has gotta be priority number one. And at the same time, because of the third interim situation, which unfortunately I'm too familiar with, because there's been a number of, and probably, I'm probably that much more conservative, but that's the path leading to state receivership in my book. If you can't show that the district can remain solvent after a number of years, you are looking at potential, going back to what the district was in 2001, 2002, when I first got on the board. So I don't think we want that at all, but at the same time, we're at a right-now phase is my, is how I'm feeling right now. I don't like any of these cuts. I don't think they're, I do believe in the sense of family, I absolutely do, but I also hope that decisions made today aren't only things that we're looking at. We just can't, I don't think this board can afford to be about cuts and not about, because it sounds like state administration, that's how it was when I was, when I first came in, everything was removed, everything was stripped. There was no heart to the district until literally being able to come out of state receivership, because the softness of being a district wasn't part of what the state's priorities was, was just to be a solvent district. They not, they don't care about after-school, they don't care. I mean, that's what the state does, they're trying to operate with the right funds, expenses, and what's coming in, so that's how they operate. And we don't need to be that. I don't think that's the goal for me as a board member, and I don't think that represents the board's direction, but I do know that we have to make a change at this point in the road. We do have the opportunity to, because of some additional funding that's highlighted in, with the custodial staff, I think was the other one, that we have this year and next year, but we don't have year three. We can't look for, you know, beyond that, we'll have to figure out another way. So in terms of your comment as it relates to, this is a short-term, I won't say short-term proposal, but this is, we have to work on the longer-term issue, which is enrollment, so.
Right. I'd like to expand for the public on something Member Dice said. We found a way legally to move the custodian salaries this year and next year, and then the law changes. We can, we can move those salaries out to a different type of money that doesn't run operations and salaries. And it's a good thing we did, because if we didn't, I wouldn't have been able to change my recommendation tonight. So, and I'm not sure it would have been only seven, you know, I don't know what it would have been. So just so you understand her comments, that is one other thing we were able to do in the last few weeks that has helped us, but it's temporary. And if you look two years out, which will be in the budget presentation, we are going to be back into a structural deficit again. So this does not clear us out of the woods.
Yeah, this is very, very tough on everyone here in this room and through the community, and I can't fathom what goes through people's minds when they hear that they're being let go. And it is a very, very gut-wrenching experience. I think, I don't know if everyone has experienced that, I've experienced, and I think it's, it's a really hard, hard issue to overcome. I do want to mention that I do appreciate everyone's contribution to the community and to every single student that's been through Emory. Although being new to the community to a degree, I understand and take into account everything that's been said tonight and the previous meetings as well. It did not fall on deaf ears, and I believe we've applied enough to sway some and change some minds regarding the severity. And I think that's what you see in some of the movement pertaining to between the seven and the five positions. So I, I feel for everyone that is affected in this decision, so I don't want to make it feel that it's in light or lack of information. So that's how I feel about this issue.
Yeah, this, this is definitely the hardest part of this essentially volunteer position, is having to look at the budget, look at what we need to do to keep moving forward fiscally and, and let people go. There's no doubt about it. And I definitely feel, feel sorry to have to be the one that, that has to be part of a vote to, to let anyone go. But we, we are facing a situation where the district is, even with a promising May revise and even with these cuts, still facing a serious structural deficit years out. You're absolutely right, and I think we all realize that the, the big issue going forward is enrollment, and I think it's in really the hope and the expectation that we will increase enrollment, that, that we've moved to only cutting five instead of seven. And we did hear, we did hear you. We are, you know, keeping the two instructional aids, because those are the, the two that are most impacting the classroom. I know that you all impact the students in one way or another, but we have to make some decisions, and they're very tough decisions. Because of the, some of the movement and being able to use the custodial out of a building fund for two years and the May revise, we're able, I think, to, to take a risk that we can only, we can only cut five at this time. I want to emphasize that we are not, we are not an under-resourced district in that we, we provide more than most districts do on average in the state. We didn't cut back from 180 days a year when most districts did. We didn't, we didn't cut our class sizes away from 20 in K3 when most districts did during the recession. We have a school nurse that serves all our students, we have a full-time librarian that serves the, the K8, we have a independent science teacher that serves the elementary. Those are all things that most elementary and K12s do not have and are, are not able to offer. And the state does not adequately fund our public school system, there's no doubt about that. We are, you know, continued to be 46th, 48th, 49th, 50th last year in per pupil funding. But we're, we're, where we're at, and we're charting a way forward, and, and the way forward is an expectation that we will be increasing enrollment. And that, and is banking on that, that we are not making more serious cuts to the classroom and to our staff at this time. And I trust that we will do that, but we're all gonna have to do that together. But I very much want to express my appreciation for the, the service that we have gotten out of each and every one of our staff, including, including those that are among the five that are in the, the current proposal.
Ms. Rollins, yeah. I understand, but Ms. Rollins, you and I agreed several weeks ago to meet together and to, to bargain that as we legally need to, so that, Ms. Rollins? Right, that's what, right. That's right, and that's our conversation to bargain impact, Ms. Rollins.
All right, thank you. We're, Ms. Rollins? We're satisfied as a board that we'll be able to continue to function and meet the basic operations that are required, and that, and I'm not gonna get in to... Ms. Rollins? Here, here, I appreciate your desire, and we're not gonna get into personnel discussions. We're gonna, and we've had public comment on the item. Okay. Thank you. Is, is there? Ms. Walker, we've, we've had... Thank you. We've had public comment on the item. It's, it's time for further discussion or a motion, and... Thank you. Do we, do we have a, a motion?
So, just to, just want to visit that. It is a different process, so that is a different process. I do, I hear you, I absolutely understand. I don't believe the board can tell you today what exactly that script is, and I do understand that there are some, this is just my, this is no conversation I've had with my board members in closed session, which we've had had several closed sessions following the meeting, that actually Board Member Marion mentioned, that the board has been in discussion about this particular item since that previous meeting. So there had been a, a scope of understanding, especially as it relates to the fiscal pieces, so that part. And also some of where things could go, but we don't have, in, in front of us today to provide you detail on the work that was captured by this goes here. We don't have that map in, in terms of that, that we don't have. I don't have that. I do have a understanding of what could happen, but it's still a matter of what we have to do. And that's just being, you know, that's just what I have as a board member, and I think that's just representative of things. There are a lot of things we don't know. We can very well, by September or August, have enrollment up by 20 some odd students, and we'll need to call someone back. And I mean, that's literally what's happened, and, I mean, that happens in general.
I'm sorry, can we, board members, can we? Can I ask, there's a motion on the floor?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, but I just, I just had to...
There's no motion on the floor.
Okay.
Nobody's made a motion. There was a call for a motion, but it was not made. You know, I'm, was not able to make the closed session meeting last night, and I was under the impression that was the only closed session meeting.
There was one this morning, I mean, this afternoon or before this meeting.
But I thought that was on the board training.
No, there was one at 5:30.
Oh. So, okay. So again, I'm, you know, I was in the previous ones, and I thought we'd go to over some of these, and I, I had hoped, based on our last meeting, that that conversation would have happened, and I'm, I'm concerned that it has not. You know, I think, you know, I looked down at the instructional assistant for PE, and I get that we've hired a PE teacher, or we're going to hire a PE teacher. So at least I can say, share that with you, because I think that's already been made in public. For the other ones, you know, I, yeah, I, if we can't justify our decisions to the public, I'm, I'm concerned. So, you know, I just, I, that's, yeah.
I, I guess, I, Member Pats, I'd like to remind you and the board that the financial aspects of the rationale for why we have to do this, I believe justifies it.
It justifies that we have to make cuts. I don't know that it justifies having to make these cuts. That's, there's a difference there, so.
Well, we did discuss this in closed session. We did, and it does get into X person doing Y, and, and we did get an explanation... We did, and it does get into X person doing Y, and, and we did get an explanation of information from the superintendent about what, how essential duties, what if any essential duties would be covered or not covered, and some may be addressed in further impact negotiations with CSEA. And we do not have a line item per line item map, but I do feel sufficiently informed to be able to feel that we do have the duties, the essential duties, covered with these cuts. So I'm, that's, that's where I'm at, and I think we have been provided information sufficient to, to make that decision. We're not the CEO. We're not, we're not running the day-to-day operations. We're one level above that, and I think we've been given enough information.
So you called the question. I'll move forward with the five, the revised five positions in hopes that we have a long-term strategy of restoring and increasing enrollment, so that's where I'm at.
I will second that. I think that both on this item and on third interim, that it is incumbent on the district to have a specific target of where we want to go in terms of enrollment for each of the next three years, and that, that, that should be part of our expectations for the superintendent and the staff, because, and the community, because it's more than, than any one person's going to be able to do. But I think we should be quite explicit about what target enrollment we want to hit at which grade levels.
That was a motion second.
So roll call, Ms. Tamer?
President F L?
Yes.
Vice President Dice?
Don't want to, but yes.
Member, Marion?
Yes.
Member Pants?
Okay, the motion passes. Again, thank you for your input. The next item, superintendent, is the approval of the third interim.
Yes, good evening again. So staff is recommending approval of the third interim report and positive certification as presented. We have Ms. Doris Sue here, I believe, to go ahead and lead us through the presentation of the third interim and to ask for your approval.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight is the, is the second reading for the board to look at the third interim. So there are altogether four items being uploaded on the agenda online. One is the two, two of them are the two spreadsheet, which is in legal size, of indicating the two options. So option one is the spreadsheet with the 5/0 of 7, FTE being cut. And then for option two is the 7 FTE over the 7 are being eliminated. So on the spreadsheet, it will show you exactly how it affecting the next school year fiscal condition and the year after that, which is fiscal year 1617. But today, I'm going to spend the time going over the assumptions that I have to, to make up the two spreadsheet that you're looking at right now. So basically, I want to point out to you that the assumptions, the changes are pretty well...
Excuse me.
The assumptions are changes pretty well from the general, January budget proposal to the May revised. And then on, if you go down to the middle of the sheet, you will see enrollment. And then on the enrollment, I just want to let you know the 695 for 1415 is the Cowpad certification number as of October 30 of 2014. And the next two years, the 687 and 640, 674, is a very fiscally concerted, conservative way of projecting using the five years average. And then a little bit below that is the ADA numbers. And for 1415, the ADA number is the actual P2 number. And we are projecting at the same level for 1516 and 1617, which is at 93% of the enrollment. And then another point that I want to bring to your attention is regarding the health and welfare, which is the medical premiums, is a practice for Emory to project an annual 4% increase from the prior year. So now we go to the next page, which is actually looking at the funding change. And on the first line, it says stay A, I want to bring to your attention that the stay A number, it includes the supplemental and concentration grant. So, so what is on the supplemental concentration is already combined into the stay A figure. And then the last item that I want to point to your attention is regarding the pass-through funding, which is including the ROP, the Cal State East Bay, and the BISA program. These are pass-through funding. They are not additional money to the district. We receive money in, but at the same time, we pay all the money right away through the So any questions on the assumptions?
Just to clarify some of the numbers, the, wherever you list a percent change, like LCFF gap close, the second line, or annual COLA, the first line, X percent to Y percent, later you have numbers. That's, that's the change from, percent are numbers based on the January budget that the governor came out with to the May revise. Is that correct?
Yeah. Those are the change from the January budget proposal to the May revised.
The enrollment, as you said, is a conservative estimate. As you explained it to me, that's a five-year average?
Yes, for 1516 and 1617.
Right. And as we just discussed, I think the, the board, at least some of us up here, don't want to accept those figures as our enrollment going forward, and, and we want to be increasing enrollment. And so I think we, while this is appropriate for the third interim, which is what we're telling the state, even under conservative estimates, we have a positive certification, we're going to meet our obligations three years out. I think we, we want to communicate to the public that we're not accepting declining enrollment as the inevitability here. In fact, our, our request and requirement is that the board, that the district can improve on enrollment.
Okay, then in that case, when I'm going to do the budget adoption for 1516, I will budget the, the next year budget as the current enrollment, which is the 695. Because 695, again, is the actual Cowpad certification number.
That's where we're currently at, so that, that would be at least maintaining our current enrollment as a, as a conservative expectation. The, we had a question earlier about why the benefits were going up so much, one of the earlier comments, and I just wanted to point out that this, on the back page, the STIRS and the PERS, which is the, the portion of payroll that the district is required to put into the retirement funds for, are certificated as STIRS, and the PERS is the classified pension fund. Those have gone up quite substantially by state law based on a budget deal last year. And basically, the state was, I want to say, $75 billion short of its liability for retirement, and the solution was to increase, basically put most of the solution on the back of districts. So districts have to pay, it's definitely a problem that needs to be resolved, but it, it's not that the state took half and districts took half and teachers or took a portion. Most of the solution went on districts. So what that means in reality is exactly what you're seeing. We have the same amount of money, but we have less for operations because we're paying more for retirement. So it's just another aspect of the way that the state is underfunding our public school system. But that, you can see that those numbers go up quite dramatically, from 8% to 12%, and by 2021, it's going to be 18%.
You're right, because look at the STIRS, it, it's going to go up from 8.88% to over 12% in the next two years. And again, you're correct that most of the increase is going to be funded by the school districts, not the employee or the state government. And look at PERS, it's from 11.7% to 15% in two years. And WCCOM, 1.8% to 2.18%. So these are additional costs when you have the payroll, when you have the payroll, these are all additional costs to the payroll. And it's going to be picked up mainly by the school district. At the same time, you are not seeing additional money from the state to cover these additional fringe benefits.
Okay, those, those were my questions and comments on the assumptions. Any others? Important members? Yeah, Mayor, Member Marion?
I have one, Doris Sue. Having to do with the one-time discretionary, I may have missed it, but what is that for fiscal year 1516?
The one-time discretionary is under the May revised, that you, you are entitled to additional $601 per ADA. So if you go 601 times what we have on the ADA, which is 641, then you will get about $385,000. This is one-time money only, and it's unrestricted, it's for general purpose.
So the, the governor has, it, it is to pay down mandates to the extent we have certain category of mandates, things that we did, the state required us to do, but they never paid us for.
Re Easter mandates.
Yes, so it's to offset that. But we don't have that much in mandates. But it, it is one-time money, so it's not an ongoing expense that we can count on. The state's going to come back with it again next year, and it's, it's not in the, you can see in the projections, because it's only, it's only, so, so that's what that Do you want to present the multi-year projection? Or did you, what else?
It's going to be, it's going to be too small for everybody in here to look at. But you want to go over a little bit on the two options?
No, just the option that's been adopted.
Okay, which is option one, 5/0 of the 7. The, the change is not going to take effect until the 1516, but under the 1516 school year, you will see the savings of the five position in the classified salary. But at the same time, we are adding another two playground supervising position on it. So these are all reflected in the classified salary and at the same time in the employee benefits column.
But the, maybe just explain what the, the ending fund balances are and the deficits are in 1516, 1617?
Okay, 1516, the projected ending fund balance under the unrestricted program is going to be 2.1 million. And then for, under the restricted program, it's going to be 157,000 to a total of 2.3 million dollars. Part of it, you're not going to see a deficit spending on this year is mainly because we talked about the custodian salary, able to move out from the general fund to the RDA money. And we did it in this year about 363,000. And we are projecting we could able to continue that practice, but with only 350,000 for 1516. But now, if you look at 1617, this is the year that we can no longer able to do it. So you will see on the, where it said, wearing you over expenditures, and then you will see actually, we come into a decrease in fund balance of $723,000 in 1617. And part of that reason is mainly to do with we are no longer able to do that kind of journal entry, and the payroll has to go back to the general fund.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Other questions from board members? Do you need a formal adoption of the third interim?
I don't need a certification, but I do need the board to approve the third interim. So the staff is recommending the board to go ahead to approve the third interim.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the third interim report? So moved?
I'll second.
And that was to approve. Roll call on approval of the third interim report motion?
President F L?
Yes.
Vice President Dice?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pants?
Yes.
The third interim report is approved by a vote of four to zero. Superintendent, would you like to introduce the next item?
Yes, and Doris Sue, thank you very much. Good evening again. The purpose of this next item is to update the board of trustees by staff and the community on the ongoing activities related to the Emeryville Center of Community Life Project.
Okay, good evening. This is the monthly update on the project progress over at the ECL site. Just a reminder, this is the layout of the site, showing the buildings. You may hear me refer to buildings A, B, C, D, and E. Again, for those of you who aren't familiar, if you look at the right side of the site at the corner, 53rd and San Pablo, is the community building, or Building A. Along San Pablo in the middle there, you'll see that's the administration building, which is Building B. At the left-hand side, along 47th and San Pablo, is Building D, the high school. The big building in the middle is the K-8 school, which is Building C. The big building in the middle is the K through eight school, which is Building C. And then in the back is renovated gym and pool, which is called Building E, just to orient everyone. Design and construction update, the gym wall framing is in progress, the studs inside the gym. The expansion, which is an addition to the east side of the gym, of the steel and concrete is complete, and I've got photographs to show all these, this good progress. The high school steel welding and bolting is complete, which is actually quite a bit of work that's now done. The high school floor slabs are poured, and we're actually pouring the last slab tomorrow. So at the end of this week, all those will be poured. High school HVAC, which is heating, ventilating, and air conditioning work is in progress. The community building, the Building A, steel and framing is in progress, and you can see that if you drive along San Pablo. The admin Building B, all the concrete work is now complete. The K through eight school, all the foundations are complete. All of our concrete is now, as of tomorrow, all of our concrete will be poured, except for the slabs in the K through eight school. So that's kind of a big milestone, we've done all those, opened all that concrete pouring. A design update, pool renovation, the bidding is complete, and we'll be discussing that facility at the city schools meeting next week.
I was thinking you could talk about the process of the bidding of the pool, I don't know, I'd be curious to hear how the bidding came out.
What the process was?
No, how the bidding, the bidding is complete, how's it look?
So the pool bidding, we had four bids. They range, they range in cost from about one point four to two million. It is substantially over the budget that was set by the pool consultant, because that facility is used, that includes, however, some options that could be not included in the scope. And that's why, because the city runs that pool facility, the consensus has been that to discuss that with the city and school, the school board and council members of city schools together would be an important forum for that discussion, to decide what, which of those should be included, not included, and have that discussion prior to awarding the contract for the pool renovation work.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't the original budget somewhere in the four hundred thousand dollar range?
No, it's seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred, okay.
What are the additional things that are making it more expensive than the five hundred thousand?
Through the design process, the filtration system, so that the school, the last fall, a school, excuse me, a pool consultant was selected as a subconsulter to the architect. The consultant put together a budget for the project that they were designing to. In the design, during the design process, a couple of things came up. First is the filtration system, which is how the pool drains at the edge of the pool. Once we got into the design process, there were discussions about improving upon what was included in the original scope, which was viewed as being more appropriate to the use of the pool, and I can, I will elaborate next week at city schools on all these things. In addition, an option, which is not inexpensive, is to replace the pool deck. All the contractors are saying that by the time we do all the work, the deck will be so cut up that you'll have a patchwork quilt of concrete, and that that concrete deck will, over time, it won't wear well, et cetera, so they're recommending the pool deck be replaced. So those are the two most significant things that resulted in the bids being higher. But again, all those other things were priced separately, so those could be taken out of the scope, as they're included as deductive alternates.
Which means one could say, you know what, don't redo the pool deck.
That is correct, that's correct.
Don't give us that filtration, give us the cheap one.
And we probably should wait for city schools for this conversation.
Yeah.
Because the city had, and I think for good reason, some city staff had some strong interest in seeing the pool done correctly, as we have had interest in seeing the network infrastructure done correctly. And part of that is the type of pool, if this is the design we go with, will allow the seniors in the community, for example, to not have to deal with as much resistance in the water. Again, the specific filtration system was selected, so I think that the difficult part for us, as you all know, I think, a lot of the planning for this was done over the years, and a lot of things, you know, either have changed over time, or pricing, and prices have gone up as the economy has changed. And so I think those might be factoring into this as well, but as Mr. Baker said, we'll be bringing this next week.
Right, and we'll go over this in more detail. Again, the rationale is that the city actually runs the pool facility, and on behalf of the district in many cases for programs, they teach swim lessons, et cetera. So it's important to engage both the city and the district in the discussion about how to proceed with the pool.
Okay, so it won't be opening in August?
The other, well, the other thing that is, the filtration system, pool deck, those two items, instead of a three to four-month project, that becomes a five to six-month project, it becomes a longer construction duration, that's the other issue. It's a very good point, I'm glad you brought that up.
Mr. Baker, what's the situation with the gym modernization? Will that be opening at a staggered opening?
Yeah, the gym modernization, there's actually three parts of it. There's the pool and restrooms is one part, there's the gym itself, and then there's the sort of ancillary facilities on the east edge, and they actually have three different completion dates in the baseline schedule.
So the district would be able to take possession of the gym before the academic year?
Correct. If DSA is amenable, we could phase in, phase the occupancy of that building, that's correct.
And then one other point, going back to the budget issues and the monies, this clarification or statement pertaining to where the money comes from, it's from capital, it's not from general fund, so as far as the bidding?
It's all, the funds are bond funds and city capital funds, that's correct. Okay. So I want to just continue with some, as with every construction project, we have unforeseen conditions and challenges, I just want to kind of point out some of these things, and what our efforts are to mitigate them. And I'll show some photographs of these things. The gym itself, when we did the demolition work up on the ceiling, the steel framing actually had lead paint on it, the same exact color of the steel. And so that was, it was very difficult to see it when we got up there, it was not identified in the hazmat report that was done a couple of years ago. So we had to actually go in and abate some of that, and I'll show you a picture of that. So that actually caused some, that's gonna, that will result in a delay of about two or three weeks in the framing worked up on that roof. But we're working with the contractor to see if we can do some other things to pick up time on that schedule. The gym roof framing, once we demo the roof off, the roof off, the framing and the sheathing, the plywood sheathing are damaged in some areas, so we've got to go fix that. And these are the things that are uncovered as we do demolition, and we're analyzing what the schedule impacts of this. They're relatively minor by themselves, but, you know, together, they may result in, you know, a month or so schedule impact. Just letting everyone know, we're still analyzing those, we've not had anything submitted with the contractor, we're analyzing also see if we can mitigate them. The soil at foundation, ex附 utility trenches, this is not a schedule impact, but as we've dug up the soil and for trenches and foundations, that is like, just when we did our soil remediation, that's got hazmat in it, so we've had to off all that, and there's, so that's more of a cost issue. Again, not significant for the project budget, but it's something that, you know, we didn't know until you test that soil to see. The sewer line routing in the street has been very tricky. The city has actually been very helpful, Public Works Director Maurice Coffin's been helpful in trying to figure that out and weave it through the utilities in the street. We had to pothole or dig holes in the street to find out exactly where the existing lines are located, and they were different than what the survey showed. The big issue is there's an abandoned twenty-four inch East Bay Mud water line in San Pablo Avenue, the entire length of San Pablo Avenue. And so we are beholden to East Bay Mud and their schedule in order to detect what that is, do testing, and actually have to cut the line into place, cut it out so we can put our sewer lines in. And we're working pretty much daily with East Bay Mud to understand what they have to do, what their protocols are. And then we have multi-agency coordination. The street, the site, as most people knows, is bordered on three sides, one by Emeryville along Forty-seventh, by Oakland on Fifty-third, Caltrans, the state, along San Pablo, and then we have our East Bay Municipal Utilities, or East Bay Mud and PG&E Utilities all in there. It's been one of the most complex sites to do work in the street of any, anything that I've ever seen. So I just want to point these things out, because the team has been working very diligently. We had two separate meetings just yesterday to talk about these utility coordination, and a very productive one at the site today, actually. These are all kinds of things that, you know, when you get into a construction site and you start digging in the street and demoing, you find these. And so I just want to point these things out now, there are potential costs and schedule impacts for all these things, we have not had any, we're just analyzing them now. Importantly, we're trying to analyze how to mitigate our way around them and resequence work in the schedule, so we don't lose time. But I just wanted to kind of point out, these things are things that especially in the last month or so we've encountered. Schedule, I won't go into the detail here, but the schedule here shows, this is again the eight-week look ahead that I show every month, that shows, the highlighted green shows when we're gonna be doing certain work. So you can see that as we get into June, we're, a lot more, wall framing's gonna go up. The exterior walls are just gonna start framing in the high school, so you're gonna start seeing the outside and the inside of the high school. The mechanical electrical plumbing, which is MEP, that is, that work has started at the high school, so it's a, the kind of, the guts of the building are gonna be going together. Both Building A and B, the exterior framing, the structural frames will be complete in the next few weeks. If you see Building A, that frame is going up right now, Building B is gonna follow very soon here, and exterior wall framing is just gonna start going up. So there's a lot of work going on, and like I said, the only concrete remaining to pour is Building C, the first floor and second floor slab, and third floor slabs, once the steel goes up in that building. So here's some photographs, the fun stuff. So here's Building A, this is, this is the, this building is framed with some steel, mostly wood, some steel, so you can see that going up, the slab is poured. This is the Building B, the admin building, all that concrete slab is now poured, so all the foundations, underground utilities, rebar and concrete is now complete in that building, except again, the second floor slab actually has a lightweight, a lightweight concrete slab on that, not like the heavyweight concrete you see here. This is the K through eight school, shows our foundations are now complete, and that one more layer of that slab work, that one layer of concrete still needs to go in, and that's our next phase there before we start erecting steel. Again, this is at the K through eight school, showing all these utilities that are now underneath that concrete coming up, and once we put steel up and start framing walls, then the plumbing and wiring, et cetera, come from those utilities there. Of course, Building D, the high school, is the one that's the furthest along. This shows the first floor getting ready for tomorrow's concrete slab pour. That's a vapor barrier, that green there, and you can also see some kind of gravel, that's what you put down before you put concrete, before you pour concrete. This now has, this is taken last week, this now is an additional mesh and rebar work that's in there, part of the slab being poured. Those silver things hanging from the roof, that's what holds up the ceilings. So the way it works is you actually, those are attached to the underside of that metal deck, and once we get the framing up and put ceiling grit in there, those will support the ceiling, the ceiling frame that holds up the ceiling tiles. This is a good shot that shows the welding and bolting work that's going on. When the steel goes up, it goes up very quickly, and then you have to go in and weld all these joints and bolt all these joints between the different members. That work is now complete, that's a big milestone. Now we can see here ductwork going in, so you can see back here the top of ductwork. This is the ductwork, these are the shafts for the heating, ventilating, and air conditioning system, and that ductwork is now in place. And this is a week ago, there's a lot more of it as it goes today. So we're proceeding with lots of progress on lots of different areas of the buildings. And at the gym, we've now completed the steel with the addition, this is the addition to the east of the gym, you can see that steelwork complete, and the concrete's now poured. Last month, this looked, you can see the base rock was in place, and now the concrete is poured, and all these utilities are now popping up out of that concrete. This is a shot that shows the lead paint abatement, so it's really hard to see, but if you look very closely, there's paint on the steel that's the same color that you would see with forty-year-old structural steel. We don't know why they did it that way, but they actually painted the steel the color of steel. On the far, on the right, you can see that kind of Z shape, that's where that lead paint has been abated, see it's a slightly lighter color than on the left side. And we had to do about, about three weeks of abatement before we could do the structural strengthening of the roof, and you'll see the newer wood up in that wood, up in that roof frame, that's new framing that's put in to size and really stiffen that roof, and you can see how it attaches to the steel in certain locations. So that was one of those unforeseen conditions that I mentioned earlier. This is the framing in the gym, so the gym inside is a wood frame, actually. These are new openings in an existing wall, so there's new openings between, into the gym itself, from the rooms on the side. This is a new wall infilling an existing wall where we're framing in between some new steel that's in there. And so the framing, the walls are starting to frame up. This, I'm sorry about the blurriness of this, this is in the locker rooms, you can see the, all the plumbing is coming up out of the ground for the toilets, and that wood is basically forming concrete curves, and after we get that in, the wood framing will go up for those walls. So progress is, is, things are moving along nicely, as these photos show. The big effort the last few weeks has been furniture fixtures and equipment, otherwise known as FFNE. As Dr. Rubio mentioned, confirmation of what we call, what we in the trade call low voltage systems, these are security, data telecommunications, audiovisual. One of the challenges with every building project these days is, when you spec these systems and put them in two years later, often the technology changes. So for security, we've done another comprehensive review to make sure that all of our security measures, cameras, card readers, things of that nature in the right place, we moved some of those around. Data telecommunications, we're, one of the things is that the new technology for fibers was called single mode instead of dual mode. So by changing to dual mode, we have to change some of the switches and other things that are in there, but that's, the dual mode is rapidly becoming obsolete. And then audiovisual systems, we're looking at what goes in those classrooms. What had been assumed for the last few years was smart boards, that technology is changing very rapidly into more of a touchscreen technology, so we're looking at making sure we have the appropriate technology for the instructional program. So we've been working with Dr. Rubio, the city IT person, the district's IT person, and the subcontractors to make sure we're doing the right systems, with the goal of keeping the budget the same, but making changes that make sense for current technology. In terms of furniture and selection procurement, we, the first, again, the first phase is the gym pool procurement, we've got that finalized, we're having a meeting on Friday with the city and the district to finalize that list so we can actually go buy it. And also, we're fine tuning our budget, which is looking favorable, looks like it's going in the right direction, which is great. We're finalizing what's called the piggyback scope of work, this is where we work with other district programs to get the best price for furniture, so we're gonna be buying furniture from, that we're bid out from a number of different districts' contracts, which is really a great way to do it. We do have a small amount, or probably about, I'd say about ten percent of our furniture, we're calling independent items, these are things that need to be bid out, that you cannot procure through piggyback. A lot of the gym stuff is like that, like volleyball nets and things like that, we, those weren't available on the statewide piggyback contracts, so we're doing those and procuring those. Items that are large enough in value, we'll bid those out. Things that are less than fifteen thousand dollars, we'll still try and get the most competitive price, but we're putting that list together so we can procure those items in the most cost-effective way possible. And that's it for this.
Can you say more about the, you say the FFNE budget is looking promising, or?
Yeah, it's, so our work so far, the MK Think, the consultant, had put together a budget for furniture, and it is trending to be less than that budget. I don't have the final figures yet, we're gonna look at those on Friday. It's just, it's headed, like I said, it's headed in the right direction, we're coming, it looks like we're coming in less than the MK Think budget in many areas.
How does, the JOA says, I think, eight hundred thousand dollars, or there's some figure in the joint operating agreement that caps FFNE?
There is a, there's a budget line item in the budget, there's a line item in the budget of, I believe, eight hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars for furniture. And there's some other, there are two other equipment line items, one for instructional equipment and one for IT equipment.
And I could add to that, so that money is, I think, I might have said this at city schools the last time, that's not going to be sufficient for that line item. That budget was originally approximately, I think, Mr. Baker will correct me if I'm wrong, about two point five million dollars.
That's correct.
We were hopeful of realizing a strong cost savings, maybe reusing existing furniture, that wouldn't have saved us very much money, it turns out. And at the eleventh hour, we were doing budget adjustments to make sure, to do our best to have a viable budget. That being the case, and again, related to an earlier comment I made, that, you know, even some of these, the technology specs regarding even the ports in the wall were outdated, so we are having to go back and make changes. We noticed that the security system was only, the cameras were only sufficient to observe people trying to enter the campus. Right now at Annie Yates, we have the benefit of cameras on the yard, which has helped us tremendously, and, you know, whether, we've had some incidents with students, we had a parent accuse us of not appropriately monitoring something, which we were able to show was not true, and we actually had an employee issue with a city staff member. So all of that to say that, right now, those types of coverage at Annie Yates helps us have a safer, stronger environment. stronger environment for our students and staff. None of that was set up in the current plans for ECL, so we had to change that. So what the city and the district, we've been doing in our meetings with Swinburne is trying to make careful decisions, and we're trying not to impact the budget, but honestly, you know, you know, changes and having, and trying our best to do things the right way so the teachers have the right infrastructure to keep the, us in line with, you know, changes in technology, et cetera, are going to cost us. And unfortunately, that budget is not going to be sufficient.
Yeah, and you don't have to make these changes, I think you said, but you're.
I don't have to.
You're desiring.
I would be remiss.
To make the change because you think that they're really in the best interest of the.
And the future of the building.
Overall project and what we want to provide.
And I think that's the city's thinking as well on the pool as well.
Yeah. And then, and we, I mean, this isn't a budget, I don't want to turn this into a budget discussion, but I know that we have some additional funds that we've got from developer fees or the redevelopment account and.
Yeah.
But, you know, are we, are we covered for the additional things that we're adding back in at this point in time? Or is that, it's still an open question?
It's a little bit of, it's an open question. We are, as we're going along, you know, we have been fortunate that we made it through the dirt in the fall, to be quite honest, and that we did not have to impact the contingency budgets as much as, you know, was possible. And we really, in some ways, got pretty lucky with digging into the ground in that facility. There are two contingency budgets, one that Turner controls mostly, and one that the city and district control. And so we are, we are, we foresee the ability to continue to push into those budgets. The district recently, we recently added five hundred thousand dollars to the project. So, but to answer again.
From our developer capital.
Yeah, that's correct. So it is still an open question, but as time goes along, we are hoping, and, you know, you never know with construction projects, but we're hoping to, that we will continue to have good fortune on the contingency money. And so it's an evolving, ongoing question for us.
Okay, but you're not, you're not hitting the alarm button yet?
I'm not hitting the alarm button yet.
Do you, on looking a few slides back on the eight-week look ahead, I mean, I guess, how does that compare to, I don't know, six months ago?
So it's a good question, so the, the main thing is that, that we've done some resequ, we're trying to resequence to work around the site utility issues, issues in the street, and that's been the biggest challenge. Building, Building D, the high school, if you recall, I've reported to the board before, back in October, we had about a four-week. The state certified, the state department of toxic substance controls certified the site. Part of it in late October, part of it in December, and that was later than anticipated by about four weeks. We actually did some resequencing of Buildings A, B, and C to kind of work around that, but Building D had an impact there. Building D, right now, is about six weeks behind schedule, but that still is a completion in December. And we're working very hard with Turner and the rest of the team to realize savings to pick up time. So there's been no, the only, the only actual request for time extension by Turner has been in relation to the soil that's been issued. And that's about, it's twenty-five days total. But that, the schedule can absorb that and still meet the contract completion dates. I'd have to look exactly and let you know exactly where we are with each of these, these items. But Turner's done a really good job of keeping work moving while we work out these, while we work out these other issues. And they're very transparent, and they're very communicative when we have an issue, what we have to work out, and that's, that's gone very well. But like with any construction project, the stuff in the ground is always the toughest. And the stuff in the street, especially this, this twenty-four-inch line, this East Bay Mudd abandoned line, has been a big challenge because we couldn't touch that for about four weeks until they, they located the, what's called the kill notice that was issued in nineteen sixty-one in their microfiche files. So, and I can, I'll elaborate in coming, in coming weeks, I'll elaborate much more detail on all this. I just wanted to give everyone a heads up of some of the things we've encountered over the last couple of months.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Baker?
No.
Any public comment on this item?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baker?
Next item as well?
Moving to the next item, did you have a?
I thought this was Mr. Baker as well, the next item.
Oh, no, this was my item, I guess, we didn't, we thought there would be some explanation. This is.
I jumped ahead, sorry.
Item four is what I'm looking at. This is, this is an item that I raised in my president's report last week, and follows up on the April twenty-second meeting and discussion we had from members of our community expressing a desire to have the board relook at the Annie Yates' ECL use and whether or not we could indeed approach the K twelve co-location issue differently and either on an ongoing or some sort of transitional basis, split the use, the grades, and either have a K, the ones that have sort of been discussed and thrown out, I don't want to limit it to just that, but that seems the logical breaks are K three or K five at Annie Yates, and then a four-eight or a six-twelve at ECL site. Or the current plan, a K twelve at ECL site. So those are sort of the, at least the three permutations in my mind, and I don't want to limit it to those if people have other ideas on how to do it, but we have to start somewhere. And the, my proposal is that, that we take a look at this and explore some questions around the co-location versus separate location use. And we do so in a series of study sessions over the next several months. And that we use this time tonight to brainstorm what the, what the major questions we'd like to address in the, in the study session are. The, the ones that are, come to my mind, and certainly were, you know, in the community's mind on April twenty-second included what, what would the additional cost, if any, be to separate our sites versus having a single K twelve site? And that's going to take some, some tricky modeling. We've had a couple of discussions already at the finance committee on how to approach that. But I think for purposes of tonight, I think that's question number one, is what, what if any additional cost would that, would be incurred? I guess the overarching question is, is this a good idea? Is there board support for, for having this series of discussions? The other kinds of questions that I would ask would be, by splitting the sites, what's the effect on the level of services we're able to provide our students? In terms of the health and wellness center, the school-based health center, the special ed, food service, library, after-school, rec, what, custodial, what, would we be able to provide the same level of service by splitting the sites as we would by having them all on one site? What are the potential positive and/or negative effects of a K twelve co-location? I think we have many new members of the community that maybe weren't around when, when some of the, the potential benefits of co-location were, have been discussed in the past and over the years. So it does seem worth having that, reviewing that, and maybe there's new literature that points in one direction or another. We do know that there is new experience because there are many, there are more schools around us. The Oakland School Board, every, has their board meetings on a K twelve co-location site at Matt West and La Squalita, I believe, is the, La Squalita is the, is the elementary school associated with it. Madison Park is another one in Oakland that is currently in operation, which I don't know very much about at all. So I think there's, Lighthouse is a, is a charter school that's a K twelve that the district has looked at before as a, as a way to see how they're operating. So to the extent there's local experience available, it seems worth trying to figure that out. How, how does the, the space that we have available at Annie Yates compare to ECL? We've had some discussion of that in the past, but again, it seemed that, that everyone's information might not be current. And maybe we've changed the design since the last time we had that discussion in ways that impact play space, outdoor space, classroom space. And the, what would we, if, if we did a K three or five, some configuration at Annie Yates, what, what do we do with the space at, at the ECL site? Like, how would we use the space that would otherwise be occupied by the K three or the K five? What's the best use of that if we were going to go forward with a separate solution? So I've got other thoughts as well, but those are some, some starting points. And I, so I guess my question is twofold to my fellow board members, is this overall approach sound like a good idea that we should undertake, number one? And number two, if so, are there additional questions that we ought to put on the table?
I might add, I believe there's probably been studies done for the district, because that's how they arrived.
Is your mic on?
Is it?
Yeah, I think I just wasn't picking.
Yes, okay, sorry about that. I'm believing that there may have been some studies that have been basically consolidated that information to one source, as far as they've explored what possibilities, how to divide sites, or however, how they arrived at the K twelve model. So I think we have to, as staff, would probably need to find that information. Because I believe, talking with fellow member Dice pertaining to previous studies, that they may exist. And it'll help guide us as far as redundant information, rather than expanding that efforts that have already been done. Let's see what we have in our archives or history of the project. Because I don't think anybody here is sitting on the, on this except member Dice.
With limited memory, thanks.
So there may be information that will help us. That's all I'm saying is that, so we need to basically go back to source before we expend too much energy on it.
The plans are actually available on the ECL website. It's very thorough documentation of sort of the process. I've combed through those, you know, it's out there. It shouldn't be too hard, and I think I've sent some to you as well, Dr. Rubio, but it's, it's out there. The information's out there, you know.
I was just going to say, I support the strategy of looking at, of having study sessions to look at these different types of questions. Because I do think, from what was stated in the input, and my own feeling about, you know, what's the best way to get us to that place, and maybe that needs to be looked at the whole thing, and getting to that place is K twelve. There's a lot of work that would have to be done, and that's just my opinion. I don't see, I see there's some work that has to be done in order for us to K twelve co-locate. So I think it is really important to have those study sessions because we do need to, you know, be very sensitive to the fact that we have been on track and paused a number of times, and there's been a lot of changes and turnover. And it's really critical that we spend the time and do it right. As we're talking about, you know, building the right spaces, creating the right spaces, it's important to, you know, give it the right amount of time to, if we're talking transition, or we're talking about different configuration, we need to have that dialogue and make sure everybody's on the same page in terms of what the next steps are, so. And that's in partnership with the city, so I don't want to lose that piece, that's got to be part of it. Because that's our obligation, is a shared obligation, it's not just one, one, you know, one board. It's a, it's a group decision in a sense, in some aspects.
Well, certainly the, how we do an after-school program, if the city's all over at ECL, and they're like, where are the kids? We gotta go get them, oh, we thought they were going to be here.
And some of it's pipeline for them too, right? So I mean, that's the whole point, there's, I mean, you have to be able to balance it all, which we're not going to be able to do. I mean, we have clearly an enrollment challenge ourselves, so, I mean, there's, there's a lot of pieces. And I think doing it in a smart, and I'll just say, a smart way, being very thoughtful about it, and not rushing into one direction or the other, because we have a clear enrollment focus that we have to put some time to, and energy, more than time and energy. But, but we definitely need to be really thoughtful about how we bring this project, you know, full circle, whatever it is. Whatever its configuration is, it has to have the right conversations at the right times. And, but make sure we're, goes back to the program, make sure the programs are clear about what they look like and where they fall, and who's part of that conversation. So there's a lot of pieces I have to feel really comfortable about seeing, but I think this is the right thing to do, is have a series of meetings, or a series of study sessions, and making sure we're not just the only ones meeting, put that way. It's got to take, it's not just board, it's got to be staff and those who are directly impacted as well.
Well, I mean, the way that I look at it, we do have an enrollment issue. We're not the only district, the state as a whole is declining enrollment, and, and many other districts are facing declining enrollment, including those around us. But we, the way I look at it is, is we have two tremendous assets. We've got a great school at Annie Yates. We've got an exciting new twenty-first century facility being constructed at ECL that's going to offer, you know, a school-based health center, a library, and integrated services with the city after-school. So these are two assets. The question is, how do we best deploy our assets to maximize program quality and enrollment? And those two things are intimately intertwined. If we, if we build program quality, they will come, so.
And I'll just add, I like how you put that, because that's more or less what I'm reaching. I just don't want us to lose focus on the present today, and it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't take us away from that, but I do think it is, it's both, it's both and. But just make sure that we do it in a thoughtful way, that honors and respects the work that has to be going on as it relates to enrollment, that's all.
Yep.
That's all.
I appreciate what was said, I think, as I said a month ago now, we're at a unique point. I like the idea that we're finally talking about a plan. I think we've had an idea for a long time and not a plan. I appreciate that we want to look back at the record, but I think, you know, I'm always flabbergasted when I sort of think, okay, well, this has all been thoughtfully planned out. And I think we're at a point now where we have no choice, we're moving in, hopefully in six months. But I think this is an opportunity to plan, and I always think that you start with the plan, what it is you want to achieve, and then your backward map as to best achieve that. You know, I'm sure you remember backward mapping and that old style, you know? Because I think we do have an opportunity, I think we have a lot of available space, which is a luxury in one direction from us, and, and an overabundance in another, you know? So while there is declining enrollment, I think if we. So while there is declining enrollment, I think if we have a good plan in place and, and a good facilities use, which we don't have at the moment, I think we can really get somewhere. And so I'd like to see us take this opportunity not to just make this a debate about whether to have two sites or to co-locate, but really use it as a time to plan and talk about what it is we want. I think we're gonna be faced with some really tough decisions based on our budgets. You know, I think it was, we, we caused longtime members of the community their jobs this evening. And we are gonna have to really look at, you know, not just how we utilize the space, but where we're putting our money in. You know, I think a librarian has been mentioned a few times as a, as a luxury item that we have that other districts don't. You know, classroom staff is a luxury item that other districts don't, class size is a luxury item that other districts don't have. And I think all of those things have to be on the table as we look at what we can do to balance the budget and, and create programs for our kids and not just focus in on the debate that I have raised about whether we have one or two sites, but really about, these are the absolute basic services, but they come at a cost, right? And so if we have a librarian, we don't have, you know, bilingual classroom assistants. If we have a health center, we, we maybe have to increase our class size. You know, these are the things that, you know, if we don't have funding in place. So it's not just what the services we want, but how we're gonna pay for them. And I think that should all be part of the plan, you know? So I think that's gonna be the critical discussion in this time, is because I don't know that that's happened, that we've really looked at in a while, these choices, you know? I think in a few minutes, we're gonna look at, we had a grand vision of a cafe, and that's been valued engineered. You know, there was a, so that, that's gonna be the case of what can we actually afford, given our present circumstances? So, thank you.
Yes, yes. I just wanna, before we do that, just see, are there, are particular questions that people want to put on the table? That, that I didn't cover, or you want to think about? And we can create a list, but.
I mean, I jotted down everything you said, assuming Rubio did something similar.
No, I did not, but I, we've been, I've been having the same conversation and thoughts. One thing we might want to add to the list I haven't thought about is, just as we're brainstorming this conversation is, we may end up with some issues of equity, you know, we're, we're gonna be ha, and this is not, and I'm not trying to make one case versus the other, just to bring this up to after our list. We're gonna have a very nice new facility with a safe, safer field, more monitoring, and probably a lot more technology than Annie Yates is gonna have. So we just want to consider that in our conversation, I think, I hadn't thought about that. I think, you know, teachers may not be thinking about that yet either.
Well, I mean, I think that, I think that's the sort of thing to, to bring out, discuss, and, and people can knowingly express their opinion of whether they would rather have technology and K-12, or less technology, but, you know, anyway. But I think, I think it's certainly a point to include.
Can I include that, the point about the fact that we do have a bond? And so I guess my, I'm just thinking of a broader finance heading in terms of what existing funding we have, capital funding. That will, once this particular phase is complete, what, because I know bond capacity is the issue, so it's not like we can just go and go get more, but, but just understand where we are at, at a given point. At some point, we'll know more about the performance of, you know, taxes in general, so that may or may not. And I'm not asking for it, I was just thinking in terms of one of those things that we need to be aware of, what opportunities exist in terms of additional funding that may support other facilities owned by the district, or may not.
Right, right, and one thing we'll have to do is this, this June or July, I forget the quite, the exact snapshot time period, is we'll be checking again, it's once a year, we can, we can check this. And so we'll be looking again for the current project first, probably.
I always worry when we talk about equity and, and we only look forward. We have 500 kids going through Annie Yates next year. And so if they're not using equipment now that's meeting their needs, I'm gonna be very concerned, and so I.
I'm not saying that.
Okay, I just, I, I worry that, you know, we've, you know, this was some comment made earlier this evening about, I, I, we've got kids now, we better be educating the kids we have now and not just worrying about the kids of tomorrow. You know, they're, they're, they're what we're charged with today. So I worry if, when people say things like, ooh, Annie Yates isn't this or that, you know? I mean, your child goes there, I hope there's an education happening there now. You know, there was a moment where my child was gonna go there next year, and I just, I, I worry about those 500 kids. That should be our number one priority outside of everything else, so.
Yeah.
You know?
Would I, 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 I think it's a, it is a question of the, there is a question about the suitability of the Annie Yates infrastructure. It's a 1960s building, I think it's a legitimate question for moving forward. And to member Dice's point, what I, what I heard, her framing was, if we decided we want to, long-term, stick with a K-three, K-five at Annie Yates, what are the infrastructure needs that, you know, and do we have the bonding capacity to, to meet them? So, but I, but I think it's, you got a 1960s building, you got a 21st century building, there're gonna be differences. What, we ought to know what those are and what, if we want to continue to use this in X capacity, then we need, what, what does that mean? What does that mean for our modernization?
I think that's a great conversation to have, I just, I think we can't prioritize it over what's actually inside the classroom, because that's where the impact is, right? It's staffing, it's that idea of, of, you know, again, I, I think back to the conversation that was this evening. It's knowing every child, it's that sense of community, it's that sense of belonging. And so, but I agree with you, there's, you know, but again, if it's in, we have to make sure we balance these and have the community weigh in, because there are certain things that are more important to the community than others.
Okay, well, I'm sensing general support for this direction. And, yeah, and now we'll take some public comment on.
That's Cooley, President. The first thing I want to say is that, since you just brought up the bonding capacity, somebody was talking recently, well, there's been quite a bit talked recently about how much property values are going up. And there's a two-bedroom condo at Watergate that's listed now for $700,000, which is really way, way higher than they were a couple of years ago. And so that's really gonna affect the bonding capacity, because the reason the bonding capacity dropped was because the property values dropped. And so with the property values increasing, that should increase our bonding capacity. And I want to start this off by saying that tonight is just one of those examples. I mean, I think it's, it's wonderful to be on the board when you're planning building a new school and doing this, that, and the other thing, but when the rubber meets the road and you have to talk to teachers or other people who are losing their jobs, I mean, that's just really must be incredibly difficult. And so I want to thank you for doing that, I'm, I'm very sorry to hear that that's happening. So I just wanted to give a couple of reasons that I think that you should be considering keeping the center, the, keeping Annie Yates open. One of, one of the things that Don Marion has mentioned is the cost of changing the plans. And I, I don't think you should change the plans, because there is always the possibility after a year or two years or whatever, that they'll decide that, you know, really the thing to do is to move the kindergarten K-five over there. And I think that if you have larger classrooms, you can always use them for multiple purposes. But if you, if you need the larger grades for the kindergarten and first or second grades, whatever those grades are, I think you need to keep those, so I don't think that you should plan on, I don't think you should change the plans. One thing is that the Annie Yates is really a known quantity, it's been very popular. A lot of people want their, you know, their kids to go there. And I mean, you saw from the, the meeting, whenever it was recently, where quite a few people came to the school board and asked to have it kept open. And so I think that the center of community life is, it's still an unknown quantity, I mean, we don't know. It would be great if people do come in, but you're gonna be starting it off gradually with the high school anyway. I think that if you start off with the high school and then you move in, you know, six to eight, and leave Annie Yates open for a year or two, that leaves, that increases your possibilities for enrollment. I think if you're gonna have increased enrollment, Annie Yates is probably the more likely place for it to happen initially, just because it is popular. And if it turns out that it doesn't, it isn't attracting people and they really want to be in the new facility, well then, you know, you can make the decision at that time to, to make that move. And I know the, the question about equity and about community schools, because community schools were really, from my recollection of, as this progressed, was really one of the primary reasons for moving towards K-12, or was a big part of it. And I had gone to the community schools conference in San Francisco about four or five years ago, with, along with a number of people from the school district. And one of the things that I learned there is that the schools are, they all treat community schools differently. And, you know, they'll have, you know, certain things at one school they won't have at another school. And, you know, as schools are built and life changes, you're never gonna have real equity. You're never gonna have exactly the same thing in one school that you have in another. I mean, certainly the schools in San Francisco have a wide variety. And, and I think that the larger cities like San Francisco has community schools. I don't know, I don't, I suspect that they don't have all of the same community services at every school. I think that they have ways of sharing them. I know my last office, I'm our IT guy, we had two men in the IT department, and we had offices in San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose. And they would spend two days a week in San Francisco, they'd come over to Oakland one or two days, and they'd go to San Jose one or two days. And I think that there are ways to work that out, you know, you can, I mean, I just think there are different ways of handling that, but I, I, I do believe that that's something that you can accomplish, you can figure out. And the, the other thing that I think is a really big factor, at the last meeting, and this is a joint project between the school and the city. And at the last meeting, there were two city council members who got up and said that they think you should consider keeping Annie Yates open. And the husband of a city council member also asked that. So that's basically, a majority of the city council is wanting to, and whereas at the very beginning when this was passed, this was before Dr. Rubio was here, and before Christian was here, and some of the other people, before Don was here. But at the time that this was finally passed and they decided to move forward with K-12, it was five-five. Five people on the city council were strongly behind it, and five people on the school board were strongly behind it. And now there's just a lot of, things are really shifting. And I think that when that happens, you need to take that into consideration. And I think that if you have, you know, a series of meetings that, where it's not where you have three minutes to get up and, you know, make your statement and then everybody else takes, but where you have, you know, interaction between the parties who are interested. But then if the decision is made ultimately to not keep Annie Yates, there should be an understanding, a general understanding as to, you know, why that is. And if it appears that there's good reason to give consideration to trying it out, then you can try it out. Because you can always, it's not like you're gonna create a new school to, to do this. The school exists, it's running, it's operational, it has students, it has parents who are happy to have their kids there. And so all we're talking about is delaying moving it and seeing how that works. And, and do you get the higher enrollment, which will help pay for, you know, teachers and, and staff? So I urge you to have with me, it looks like you're going to, it looks like, sounded as though you were moving in that direction. I would encourage you to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley.
Good evening again, Board. I wanted to say thank you for listening from our last conversation and actually taking the time to really look at this. But a couple of things to look at, at the study session perhaps, would be a systematic rollout, since the high school is coming over, have a systematic rollout for how the middle school and how the elementary school will roll over. Perhaps leaving Annie Yates open does allow that room for growth that we're anticipating in our student enrollment. And also, it's interesting you mentioned the Lighthouse. We did talk a lot with the Lighthouse Charter School when this first, when this idea first started. One thing that they do have are, are coaches, they have instructional aides, they have, there, there are other people outside of the teachers who support the program that they have. And those people are very key and integral to the success of that program, and they're on one site. And how they communicate and work and collaborate together is very key and very important to the success of that program. I will also mention to the Board that Dr. Johnson prepared a report a few years ago when looking at our staff, when our scores were at, they were very high. And how students performed, and he looked at our relationships and how we collaborated and who the principals were and, and how all of these different integral parts and all of the people in the community, how they all worked together, that contributed to the success of the students, which we saw when we had our highest scores. And how also the, the staff who was here, the library, the gardening community, a lot of those things that are, that are kind of on the table to be, something to be done with are integral parts to the success of students and teaching the whole child. So I would say please look at those things. Another design for, someone mentioned space and how the space could be used. At one point, I can't remember which planning meeting I attended, they had some spaces with rooms for our learning center, where all the learning center teachers were in one room servicing students. Perhaps those rooms could be used, if you leave Annie Yates open, those rooms could be used so that more students can be serviced in those spaces without being crowded in. Just a couple of suggestions. I don't know if anyone has actually looked into pre-K and preschool options with having more space at Annie Yates, with perhaps the middle schoolers having a full program at the new site, that leaves some rooms open for students and perhaps incorporating preschool element or sped services for pre-K and looking into some of those resources to possibly bring in income for the students that we service. But again, I would just say please look at those reports and, everything is based on relationships. When we communicate and have good relations and come up with good plans, I mean, my motto is anything is possible if we work together. So we really, really, really need to work together and look at this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. My thought was that, after talking on several Saturday mornings, because this is my community, I live in a community around the corner from the school. And so I'm often around when our kids are playing soccer on the field, and I go on the field and I'm talking with parents. They really want to feel that they have a voice. So while you're saying a study session, I'm looking at more of a, of maybe considering a workshop where there are materials and information that you say was previously on our website, re-discussed, and parents having options to have comments. I can remember in my own experience in doing a workshop, and we had people breaking into groups where things were being discussed and there were pros and cons being offered. And there was back and forth conversation between board members, and it was more, felt like the community was being heard and listened to. So that was my, my one comment, was more of, maybe you might still have your work session, but also maybe think of a workshop as an option, because you do have some parents that are, want to be heard. And of course, we would have norms, we always have norms when we have meetings, and we would encourage people to follow them, you know, and be respectful. My second comment is, also talking. My second comment is, also talking to parents on those Saturday mornings, there are many people who would love for you to make the big mistake of getting rid of Annie Yates and leaving that campus open. And we'll be up for charter schools to come in, because there are people who are sitting and waiting for that campus to become empty. It's an excellent campus, it's well located. And if we're not thoughtfully thinking of what we're going to do with that property, just like Ms. Lewis said, Berkeley is getting a K through, a, a pre-K program for, for their sites. Some sites are becoming pre-K one and two. So West Cota Costa has some pre-K programs. We've been talking and doing investigation now, because next year we're going to have pre-K class. We have 14. We had a bunch of kids we could have accepted last year had we had more space to put them in. We were, we had kids on the waiting list. So if we're talking about available space and more enrollment, if you're looking at what other districts are doing, pre-K is a way of increasing enrollment. And I, I think this year's enrollment is going to be similar. We will have a entering pre-K class, and we have 14 students already who will be pre-K. So we're looking at close to, based on not even looking at incoming enrollment for kindergarten, that we may have four kindergarten classes. So when you're looking at that, I think you really need to look at expanding the pre-K program. We also have some kids who are coming from this site, who will be coming over. One of the things we did was take some of our special ed programs out of, of the classrooms. We need more services to be able to service students who need additional services. And we're noting in kindergarten, being that I'm a kindergarten teacher, that there are really a strong need for some additional services for students coming in. So if you are having those conversations with your teachers who are presently in the trenches, you're going to see that some maybe the, the programs that we have now with the pull-out services, they're working, but could we better service our special needs service, uh, students with additional services where we pull them into resource rooms? And if we have available space at Annie Yates, that may be something where we can better provide resources for special ed. That would be also another way of looking at additional resources for our district. So please consider the workshop. I think it, some of your people that you don't necessarily always get along with might appreciate that. And, you know, and sometimes the best way to get people to feel comfortable is to help them in the planning process. And help them be one of the ones that maybe be the person who helps coordinate and get that workshop together. That's a thought.
Thank you, thank you for the suggestion. I think it's definitely worth considering how to, how to make the process inclusive and interactive, and that probably doesn't mean doing, discussing at 8:30 on a, on a school night. So, it's a good suggestion. Further public comment on this item? Further board comment on this item? Okay, I think we're moving forward, and stay tuned for how that's going to be rolled out and when. The next item you want to introduce, Superintendent, and then I think this is Member Pats's suggestion, so we can.
Good evening again. The purpose of this item is to let the Board have some time to discuss the naming of the ECCL gym.
So as we open these new buildings, I think we are, use my cliche, we have a unique opportunity to name them after people who've contributed to the community. And I think that's really an important task. I think the, Mr. Ferber spoke how he'd like to go back to Emory High, not Emory Secondary School. And while that building isn't quite ready yet, and that's a discussion for, for a later date, I do think the gym is going to be the first building that opens up. And, you know, reading through board policy and how this works, the way you name a building, and it's attached here, and you guys have all probably read it, but the way you name a building, as we set up a committee, they come up with some recommendations and we go from there. So that's what I'd like to see happen, is we start setting up those committee, at least for the gym, to move in a direction to name it. You know, I, I, I've talked to a lot of members of the community, and I, I, you know, I, I have an idea that was given to me by Councilmember Asher. But, you know, I think I'd like to see the committee go and come up with some names that would fit Emory well and fit, you know, a gym at the high school. So, but yeah. So that's the purpose of this item, is sort of allow us to create that committee.
Thoughts, reactions?
Yes, Member Mary.
Actually, I think we may touch upon that at the next city school committee meeting as far as naming certain parts of the campus. So I think we might want to look at a comprehensive approach as opposed to delving into one specific location or one specific building. So that item will be probably brought up during that discussion. So I want to take a look at the bigger picture as far as, rather than honing on one, one point. And that's, that's all I needed, wanted to ask, mention.
We had a draft, or I got a draft agenda item, I actually don't, did others? From, from the city schools people? And I don't. So maybe it was just, maybe I got it because I'm president. Yeah, did that go, do you know, Mr. Baker, if that went to all board members? Or, or just the co-chair and I was CC for being president?
Yeah, I think I just got a draft for, for the next week, but it wasn't the final. But I do know that this, this topic in terms of naming was, was touched upon at the last city school. The problem is what, I can't, I mean, I'm sorry. But it didn't have the minutes, so I couldn't reflect back like what, what was the discussion. But I do know that because the gym and the pool were, and the fields were part of the joint use, that's probably why it came up in that conversation. And I think that's where, as Mr., excuse me, Member Miriam, I was going to get it out, mentioned that it, it definitely was one of those topics on the horizon. But a valid point that it will be the, a building that's coming online fairly soon. And I don't know, in the grand scheme of things, what our, is there a grand opening, a soft, I mean, not a grand opening, of course, but a soft opening in terms of the facility or what the plan is. Because I think whatever is done, whether it's coordination with the city or if there's certain pieces that are going, you know, are going to be part of the unveiling of things, it needs to be well, you know, addressed in terms of the naming or doing something, so.
Again, I just, you know, I'm all for involving the city. I think, you know, particularly knowing that the city council as well as I do, it increases the likelihood that it goes in the way that I would like it to. But I think for me, it's really important that we make sure we either amend board policy to allow us to do that, or that we follow board policy. And so I think.
I think we have to, I mean, I agree, I think that's right. Because I, I think part of it is making sure that we're respecting all, all documents, including the JOA. Because I don't know, I mean, honestly, I couldn't tell you right now if there's something, if there's a shared conversation about recommendations to both bodies or to us or something, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, and again, I'm, you know, I, I think if we put together a committee, we, our policy encourages us to have civic leaders on it. And I know that we would have no problem doing that, because I think this is important to the community as a whole. So I think that that's, you know, I think that's a nice way to do this, is if we do put a committee together, or again, you know, or amend our policy, let's just say, hey, given this is part of the JOA. You know, the last discussion you guys had at the city school meeting was more around selling naming rights.
No, it was really about.
You know.
Broader conversation.
Yeah, there's the bricks and things, so.
It came up, as I recall initially, the city manager brought it as a financial fiscal idea. Could, should, could we raise, you know, money with a name? And that generally did not get a lot of support. People were, thought that sounded too corporate and exclusive. And, and then it evolved into a, but maybe there's some good kind of.
Numbers, enough zeros, I think.
Yeah, we got into the bricks about the name, and it would be cheap. And, but, but I think there was kind of a general, more in the direction you're talking about, is there some historic recognition? So I don't want to.
No, that's it, we're all on the same page, I think, on this.
I, I think, yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's, it's an intriguing idea, and it's a great opportunity. Obviously, we're, we're not building a new building or gym or facility every, every day. The, I have like a legal real estate question, which is like, who owns the gym? And, and possesses the naming rights? And, and I'm not sure I know the, I think the answer is us.
I think so, too.
But we've leased it.
Right.
For 40 years, right? For a very long period of time to the city. Now that, I don't think legally gives them the legal right to name it. So, so. My working assumption is we legally, if we wanted to do it, we could do it. And, 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 and maybe legally, we, to do it, we, we can do it by following our procedures, and who cares about the city? Like, I think that might be the legal answer, but I'd like to know. Now, it's not my feeling, obviously, is that we should, you know, do whatever we want. My feeling, obviously, and I think everyone else is, is we should have the conversation with the city, figure out what is the right procedure to explore the conversation in, and certainly include the city on the, you know, in, in, in the conversation. And on the committee is a, is a good way to do it.
Yeah, no, and I just think we're at the point where we need to start thinking about it, so, this is fruitful, thank you.
So can, can we get it on the agenda for Madam co-chair of the city school?
It's a draft.
Oh, you're not going to be there.
And there's a, the next meeting is July, is that correct?
I believe.
Fourth is the immediate next, but the one immediately after that would be July.
I believe we said July, because I think August is going to be a bad time for most people.
The second, July 2nd, or whatever that Thursday is before, that's July 2nd. City schools, yeah. Fourth of June, but then there's another one, July 2nd.
But she's saying, she's worried about not being able to make the fourth?
Well, no, I'm just saying, I don't know if the agenda's been set. That I'm not sure.
And this was just a draft.
It's a draft.
So I think if you tonight got back and said.
I'll email and say, add, include the topic of naming.
Yeah, the gym.
Or broader, right? I mean, in terms of the whole, well, yeah, the gym specifically. Let me do that now.
No, I think there is a broader discussion, but I think, so, and again, I don't know what we're held to with our board policy, if we need to come back and say. Yeah, that we're, you know, and maybe we pass some resolution that says, given the ECCL is a joint project, we're going to suspend how we do naming and do it together with the city. I don't know. I don't know how we can do that sort of thing, but I think that's possible as well. You know, so.
Okay, well, we can, so we'll try to get it on the, the city schools' agenda. The superintendent will talk to our JOA attorney and, and we'll figure out the real estate question. And then we'll, we'll have more, I think we'll probably revisit this at, at our next board meeting. It's a potential agenda, or AA meeting in June.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Our next, is there any public comment on this item? No members of the public are present, so, other than Mr. Baker. Do you have any comment, Mr. Baker, on this item? He does. On the naming, on the naming, okay, all right.
Come on up anyways, you're next on the agenda.
Well, now it is time for you. Item six is approval of a change order for electrical value engineering reconciliation.
Okay, there are two change orders that are before the Board tonight. Both are in excess of the Board limit of 83,500. I want to point out that these are actually, however, these are reconciling some value engineering items. The math is a, a, a bit, not complex, but I want to, I want to describe it very carefully. This, these have more to do with, with work going from one subcontractor to another than actual increases in project costs. So I want to explain how these work. If you're, if you recall, it was just about a year ago, about 10 months ago, we had to do some.
Can I just interrupt you to say? So you're, you're going to be talking about item six and seven together?
Yes, is that, is that?
That's fine with me, just let me, let me make the public announcement that we're, we're handling item six and seven. Seven is approval of a change order for the traffic signal sidewalk improvements at 53rd and San Pablo.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead, please.
There were, part of our value engineering items back in August of last year were for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems savings goals. So we set, we targeted, we tasked the team with saving 5% of the total cost of these systems. And, and one item was saving, the goal of saving 5% of the cost of electrical systems, which would be $273,000. The timeline of, was such that we had to set that, put, include that target in Turner's contract, and then the design team and construction would work together to realize savings. And then once we realized that savings, we would reconcile things. So we did not identify specific items at that time. The design and construction team has had a series of meetings over the last few months to identify those savings. To date, the team has identified a savings of $159,345 to fund metal electrical systems. This is actually all the guts of the building. This is conduit, electrical panels, savings in labor. We've figured out ways to do things more efficiently, shorter runs of conduit, ganging panels together, doing more efficient runs of routing things. So things that you don't see and don't decrease the value of the project at all. But even then, we managed to save about $160,000 in all of that. So that's, that's good news, because we actually, it's not things like cheaper light fixtures or fewer light fixtures or things of that nature. And this is working with the electrical engineer and the subcontractor more metas to identify those things and kind of negotiate down parts and pieces. The team is still working on additional credits for things that you do see. And this is the, the kind of more visual stuff, like interior light fixtures. The deletion of the café had some electrical things, we had to redesign how the electrical worked in the library, site lighting fixtures, especially specifically in the community hub, and deletion of some spare conduit that we don't need throughout the project. We're still in the process of working on those items and negotiating those items. We think there's at least $50,000 more to save for those items. However, the electrical engineer, electrical contractor is just about to start roughing in electrical on the site. They have a, they have a credit of $273,000 in their contract. To date, they've only saved 149, we've saved 160. We're still working on more. But in order to get them, to get them contracted and moving on the rest of the work, we need to, we need to reconcile most of this value engineering item. And so what we're proposing tonight is that we, the delta, which is 273 minus 159,345, is 113,655, that we proceed with that to get their, their contract work in place so they can start actually spending money and putting, putting the guts of the buildings in while the team works on some of these other savings items or the things that can come later in the schedule. So they've been very good, they've, they've, you know, the contractors have worked to date at no cost, working, putting a lot of hours into realizing the savings. And, and so we're recommending that we do this so that we can show good faith that we're moving forward with the majority of their work while we work on saving some of these other things which come later in the project. And so that's what this item is. So before, I want to ask entertaining questions on this. Again, the value engineering goals, we're, we're trying, what we're now doing is we're identifying the actual scope and identifying the real savings we're going to have.
So the, the, the specific request is to recommend approval of $113,000 in the change order so that they can go ahead and do this work.
Correct.
And later, you think we might. And later, you think we might, um, you might be able to save another fifty thousand.
Yeah, and we, we will, there will be savings, and what we'll do is, we'll come back.
We didn't hit, we won't hit our two-seventy-three?
Probably not. I think we're going to end up at about, probably about two-twenty-five or so. And the rest would come from contingency, so as we come back, we'll come back to you. Probably just ratification items, because they'll be smaller for credit. We'll have credit items, for, for example, right now, interior light fixture savings looks like is about thirteen thousand dollars. The spare conduit looks like it's another fourteen. We're still negotiating that, we're still trying to improve upon that. Uh, this, the electrical contractors are getting a bit nervous understandably. They've done all this work at no cost, and now they want to get, they're going to start actually putting physical work in now at, fairly rapidly. So we want to reconcile the bulk of the savings we've realized so far. And then, as we proceed, we'll do credits for these other items.
And if we're short the fifty thousand or so, because we, we hit two-twenty-five, not two-seventy-three, that, that'll come from contingency?
That's correct.
Okay, what is, can you remind me, I ask you this every time. What was our starting contingency and how far have we?
Yeah, there's, there are two contingencies. Um, there's one in Turner's contract. They're both, but the, the district controls both, actually, but they're used for different purposes. And it's, the only difference really is the markups, it's a bit arcane. But the, the one in their contract is used to clarify discrepancies in the drawings, uh, clarify details, things of that nature. That is about one-point-four million. There's also two-point-one million that is the district's contingency for, used for whatever the district chooses to do so, and that's for design changes. And also unforeseen conditions, like some of the work on the street and the lead paint abatement, things like that. There's, they're different, but the bottom line is, there's three-point-five million dollars in the approved budget for contingency. To date.
This would fall in the two-point-one category, I think.
That is correct. That's correct, because it's more, just more or less discretionary. Um, I want to point out that to date, we have not, we've, we've, to date, we've executed change orders in the amount of about two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, and we're, we're over a third away through the project. So where I think we're in good shape. Um, you'll see, when I talk to city schools next week, is that we've, we've spent a lot of time, rolled our sleeves with Turner, trying to identify everything we possibly knew about now for the whole project. And we came in at, I think, about one-point-two million, I'll describe that at city schools next week. So, we're doing pretty, pretty well, I think. Um, and so, you know, I think that it is prudent to show goodwill back to the electrical contractors, so they can get moving and not be uncertain about putting work in and not getting paid for, to do this while we continue to work with them to realize more savings. So that's where we're at right now.
Okay, other questions on this item?
Yeah. Mr. Baker, um, the way this, the contract is written, it's a lease-lease-back method.
Yes.
And so this two-seventy-three value engineering is basically, uh, in the allowance or in the, in the, I know it's a value engineer line item. How was that arrived at, as far as in the relationship to the lease-lease-back, as far as how the subcontractor, the electrical in this point, in this condition, is, is using that allowance?
It's a great question. It is a credit allowance of two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, and we just said, it was calculated straight up of five percent of their contract value. Said, we want you to do better than this, get to ninety-five percent of your costs. We're going to work with you to get down to that number. Um, so it's a credit allowance, so they can see what the, the thing is, they're going to start putting in more work than their contract is, which is why they want to reconcile this now, as we continue to work for more savings. So that's really what, if that, does that make, answer your question? Okay.
Member Dice, any comments, questions? Uh, public comment? Okay, why don't, why don't we take, uh, item six before we move to item seven? Do we have a, a motion to approve item six change order?
Move approval of, uh, item six, um, change order request.
Second. Roll call, please.
President Hafeld?
Uh, aye.
Vice President Dice?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pat?
Yes.
The motion, uh, to approve change order, uh, electrical value engineering passes four to zero. Uh, now, item seven is the change order for the traffic.
Yeah, item seven is another V E reconciliation item. This is, it's, but it's different in nature. Um, one of the items which was included in the, in Turner's contract is decided by, again, the committee. There was a district city committee with three participants from each entity. One thing was included was actually deleting traffic signal and sidewalk improvements at Fifty Third and San Pablo. This was bulbouts at the corners for pedestrian safety, um, upgrading the signals with audio, um, audible signals and better crossing things. Um, again, it was some hard decisions made, but it was, it was viewed that those were not, the, the group decided that that was a good thing to save, save on, that they felt that the, the existing conditions were adequate, given that, um, that, that not too many kids would really cross San Pablo. That was the rationale behind that. Again, this is a hundred thousand dollar credit allowance included in Turner's contract. Um, and it was really primarily assigned at that time to the electrical contractor, because it's mostly signal upgrades. It was approved by the district city committee. Two days before contract went to the council and, um, in the council packet and to the board packet, the city planning director noted that this had to come out, this had to be in the project, because it was a part of his interpretation for compliance with SEQA, the California Environment Quality Act, is that we had to do these upgrades. So he interpreted the, the initial study, the mitigated neck deck, and just determined, you know, we got, we have to do that signal, we can't take that out, we got to put it in. So the city manager do that, asked us, instructed us actually to put this back in. However, it would have meant changing Turner's contract value. So we brainstormed saying, well, what else can we do? Can we save a hundred thousand dollars someplace else? And so we changed that line item to site concrete value engineering, to look at ways to have site concrete be less, being that that was part of the curbs and work at the, at the intersection. We thought, we said, well, we'll, we'll try and save that a hundred thousand dollars on site concrete, not the signalization, we'll leave the changes to the signal in the project. So it was changed before it went to the board and council, it was approved in the board and council. So in other words, the board council item is still the same dollar value, but it's a different scope than what was originally envisioned. So, what we're doing now is we're reconciling this. This is also so that the electrical engineer had this hundred thousand dollar allowance. The value of those signal upgrades is a hundred thousand nine nineteen. They need to start putting that work in underground and, and start designing the signal work. So we want to put it back into their contract at the same time. We are looking, and we had two meetings last week to look at savings in site concrete, and we think we're going to have some good savings in site concrete. So the intent is to realize a hundred thousand dollars in savings with the concrete subcontractor, not the electrical contractor. So what this is doing is reconciling things between two subcontractors, because the city made that last minute change. And so that's, we're, we're just having to, having to do the accounting, if you will, right now.
Will we get a hundred thousand dollars in savings on the site concrete?
Yeah, we, we, we looked at this, we have, there's, there's three areas we're trying to save in. There were, there was a couple of their value engineering items that add up to about, I think, three hundred total. Um, and we think we're, we're, we think we'll get close to that amount overall. Um, and this is just changing, um, uh, the finish of the concrete, um, changing some, simplifying some seat walls that are very complex to form. It's fairly, a lot of kind of arcane detailing, but we've made good progress. We had a swirking session with the, with the site contractor last week. I met with the architects on Friday. Uh, have been engaging the city in this discussion as well. Uh, so we think we're going to, we're going to save at least the hundred thousand dollars, probably more. Um, but what we're doing is, because the last minute change occurred, Turner already bought out the contract with the electrical engineer, save, to make signal changes, and the city said, no, we can't, we got to put that back in. There is no mechanism to do that at that time. We're doing it at this time to make the subcontract, the electrical subcontractor whole again, because they're about to embark on all this work. So again, we'll come back to you later on with a credit change order for concrete savings, once we confirm that scope. The reason it's sequenced this way is that the site concrete is the last thing done on the job, so we still have time to work things out, whereas right now, we're going to start doing all the electrical work in the buildings.
And you may have said this, but the, the, how is the traffic signal going to be different? Because we have a traffic signal.
Right, exactly, which is exactly why the group said, we have a traffic signal with cross, with walk, don't walk signs, and we have crosswalks, and we have, and we have, um, accessible ramps. Uh, the, the, uh, my understanding, I apologize, I don't know the detail, but my understanding of the mitigated neck, make, excuse me, mitigated neck deck, the SEQA document, was that being that it's a school use, that making that intersection more pedestrian friendly was desirable. And this is an interpretation of that document by the city planning director, said, we have to do the signal upgrades, do the bulbouts of the, at the, you know, change some curbs, primarily it's, it's adding audible signals and changing the, the signal itself, so that it's more pedestrian friendly. That's the bulk of the, the dollars here.
Does that mean it, there's going to be longer walk time, or?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that, actually.
I mean, you have the nice crossing, uh, kind of in front of Erizmendi or, you know, um, on San Pablo, where you have the light that flashes yellow on the, in the street. And, and someone can kind of, independent of the traffic light, press a button and it's supposed to stop. So it's not that.
No, it's not, it's, uh, I, I, it may include that. I, I've not, I'm not certain, it's been a while since I looked at that, but, um, I do know that it has audible signals, um, changes to the signal, the lights on the towers themselves. It may include the sidewalk. I, I don't recall specifically that was mentioned in the, um, in the SEQA document. Um, again, the city and district felt that we, they could live without that at that time. Then right before it went to the city, the city planning director said, wait, you got to put that back in. Contracts have been all, all negotiated, so we had to put something else in instead. So we're hoping to find the same dollar savings in site concrete in lieu of the traffic signal. But since the traffic signal electrical work is about to start, we want to, we got to need to put this in the electrical contractor's contract, and then we would get a credit change order from the site concrete contractor at, uh, down the road.
Got it. Uh, other questions? Any, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, uh, do we have a motion to adopt this change order?
Move approval.
Second. Okay, Member Marion is seconded. Uh, roll call, please, Ms. Tamarie.
President Hafeld?
Yes.
Vice President Dice?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four to zero. Onto item eight, superintendent, you want to introduce this one?
Good evening again, uh, this item, thank you. This item is to ask the board to consider designation of representatives to the league for next year.
Can you explain what, what the league is, what this representative will do? And, and do we have a particular nomination?
Uh, in your board packet, yeah, I'll tell you what I know, which is, may not be a lot. It's not, not an area that I, I have a lot of background in, but I believe we are, are members in C I F league for our sports and athletics. Uh, and on the form, uh, we have, Principal Ferber has listed, uh, Mr. Todd Kane Ross, who is our parent and also our current athletic director, and Mr. Ross Benbrook, who is, uh, one of our dynamite new teachers this year, uh, who are going to both work as co-athletic directors next year.
Uh, and, and so we're, um, designating them as athletic directors? Or we're designating them to be our representatives to the C I F?
That's correct, the latter.
Okay, all right. Um, do we have any discussion? Member Marion?
What league are we in?
Um, the, the little bit I know is, is that we are, we participate in C I F. We've had some, uh, interesting, um, challenges, uh, in recent years regarding our membership and participation, but my understanding is that we are currently still standing members. I could find out more information from Principal Ferber, if you like.
Yeah, that'd be good, thank you.
Yeah, well, I don't know our teach, the, the teacher, Mr. Ross.
Todd Kane, uh, oh, Mr. Benbrook.
Mr. Benbrook, yeah, I don't know, but I do know, um, Todd Ross. And, uh, yeah, I know, I know he's, um, well, he's China's father and, and Cameron's father, and, and an upstanding member of our community, and an excellent, um, athletic coach of, of many different sports, and is working very hard to.
Yeah.
Make sure that our high school students have a wide range of, of sports. Um, extracurricular opportunities available for them. So I, I think, uh, he, he would be an excellent representative, and I'm happy to support Mr. Benbrook as well. Uh, any public comment on this item? Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of the two names provided by the superintendent.
I'll second. Uh, roll call, please, Ms. Tamarie.
President Hafeld?
Aye.
Vice President Dice?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes four to zero. We have our C I F representatives. Uh, superintendent, do you want to, uh, go over the, um, the board calendar?
Sure, we have coming up our next regular meeting of the board trustees on June 10th. And then we have our city schools meeting, uh, before that, next week, on Thursday, June 4th at five-thirty P M, uh, both here.
All right, um, we skipped, uh, board reports, because it didn't show up on my, uh, thing. Uh, do we have any board reports and announcements? Nope, seeing none. Uh, we will now adjourn the open session and retire to the closed session of this meeting at nine eleven.